All right, everybody, are we ready?
Terrific.
Today is Tuesday, March 24th. Our town council meeting is a little different than usual. We are here in council chambers as a council, sitting as far away as possible from each other, not because we don't like each other, but because we are doing our best here to conduct the business of the town, but follow those guidelines that we've been given at the federal and the state level. We realize that we're using some new technology tonight and doing our best to make sure everything works well, and appreciate everyone's patience in advance as we move forward. We've had some exciting things happening over the last week in town. I think everyone can agree, and not the kind of exciting that I think everybody wants to write home about, but this one in particular is a good thing. And we'd like to welcome Councilmember Bill Spence. And at this time, we will start with a call to order and the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance today will be led by Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which
Our invocation this evening will be offered telephonically by Fran Louder. Fran serves as the Town of Gilbert liaison to JustServe.org, who does a tremendous amount of connecting volunteers with the public. So we'll get Fran unmuted and ask her to offer our invocation. Fran, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me? I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, Fran, I think we need to turn up your volume, I apologize.
Okay.
Oh, there we go, now we have you.
Okay, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, please bless our nation at this time, please bless the world as we are seeing so many suffering at the hand of this virus. Please bless our president and our leaders, our Arizona governor and his leaders, our Gilbert mayor and our town leaders. Bless those who have the virus and the families who mourn and support and are there. Please bless those who have the virus. Bless our first responders, our doctors and our nurses, and most of all, our Father in Heaven, please bless our families to be strong, to have courage, to be faithful, to be faithful in God and our Savior, Jesus Christ. At this time, please bless us to be wise in our decisions. Most of all, help us to love each other, to serve each other, and follow His example in feeding, clothing, and taking care of each other. Please help us to seek out opportunities to serve and to help. Please guide this council and our mayor that they will help those here in Gilbert to do what is best for us. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
We're still, we're learning as we go, so sorry, everybody. All right, we're back. All right, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
President. Thank you, we have Amy on the phone, Councilmember Yentes on the phone with us this evening, so thank you. At this time, we do have our first agenda item, which is the oath of office. Our presiding Judge David Kutchin will administer the oath of office to our new council member, Councilmember Spence. We will ask Councilmember Spence to go ahead and, the floor of the council chambers, and don't shake hands when this is over.
All right, well, congratulations on your appointment. Let's get you sworn in. If you'd repeat after me, have you raise your right hand, please. "I, Bill Spence, do solemnly swear..."
"I, Bill Spence, do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona..."
"And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona."
"...and the ordinances of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona."
"And the ordinances of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same..."
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same."
"...and defend them against all enemies..."
"And defend them against all enemies."
"...foreign and domestic..."
"Foreign and domestic."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge..."
"And I will faithfully and impartially discharge..."
"...the duties of councilmember of the Gilbert Town Council..."
"Duties of councilmember of Gilbert Town Council."
"...to the best of my ability, so help me God."
"To the best of my ability, so help me God."
Congratulations.
Chair of the board. Councilmember, if you'd like to say a few words, we'll let you get a photo in first.
I did want to start out, just one week ago today, I was in this podium, actually interviewing for this job. I wanted to talk and thank the staff, Patrick and Lisa, just a Herculean effort to be able to go through and process me under a limited staff manning, for everything from ID cards to computers. I would not be here today without the support that your staff has given me. I'm prepared for this meeting, I'm ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spence. At this time, we do have a presentation. I believe that will be communicated by Tanya Wright from our finance team, and it's the presentation of the annual audited financial report. Tanya, we'll get you unmuted here.
Well, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me here virtually to present to you our comprehensive annual financial report, or what we lovingly refer to as our CAFER, for fiscal year 2019. And I especially want to welcome Councilmember Spence. This will be the most riveting presentation you will hear probably during your time on council. That was a joke. Can you hear me?
You sound great, Tanya, keep going.
Okay, all right. Before I jump into the presentation, I just want to thank my amazing team from the accounting division again this year. 2019 was a crazy year. We implemented our new ERP system, Munis, went live, and my staff were just truly amazing. They spent the entire year revamping their processes to make the best out of the new ERP system that we have, and also updating our processes and procedures to ensure that we're following the best practices, on top of doing their regular job. So as I stated, this is our first year using Munis for our ERP system, and we had to implement another piece of software to build our comprehensive annual financial report. The financial statements within there are very complicated, and so there was a separate piece of software we used. We used to use what was called CAFER 2000, because it was literally from 2000, so we were in desperate need of an upgrade anyway. And I just want to thank Lawrence Schultz and Anthony St. George, who's no longer with the town, but he still did a tremendous job in getting this done in a two-month period, when the industry average for municipalities is a year. So crazy accomplishment.
We're cheering for you, Tanya, you can't hear us, but we are.
Okay. I just got a message from Ballard that you can't see my presentation. Can you see it?
We cannot see it yet, let's see if we can fix this, because I know there's others that want to participate. So, we're gonna open it up for just a second. Did you click, Tanya, the bottom, it looks like an arrow on top of a piece of paper where it clicks "share content"? Tanya, do you see in your screen?
No, I don't, I don't have it.
So you must be on a different view, Tanya, than what you need to be on.
Okay.
So you're gonna need to switch views of your screen.
I'm so sorry, you guys. We practiced this, I promise.
Okay, we're all gonna work through it. So if you click underneath your name or move your mouse down underneath where your name is, do you see TW in a big circle on your screen?
No.
Okay, minimize your PowerPoint, please. And get back onto the Cisco Webex events page. One time in 2000, I gave technical support over the phone, so we're trying it now.
I see Joey, Ashley, Amy Yentes, and Cory, RB2.
Okay, here's what we're gonna do, Tanya, because I know that this is important, and it's really a visual thing that we need to do. I'm gonna push pause on your presentation, and we'll go through the rest of the agenda, and I'll let you work on the phone with someone else to try to figure out if we can get you up and running, and if not, we will move you to our next calendar council meeting.
Okay, sorry about that, thank you.
That's okay, thank you. Yep, you're gonna get a call in just a second, right now. Okay. Thank you, everyone. All right, we will move to communications from citizens at this time. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, and do we have them on the phone, or do we have them in your hand?
In my hand.
Excellent.
There may be on the phone.
Okay, we'll find out in just a second. We'll do the ones that you have in hand first.
All right. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. Yvani Saragoza is a Gilbert resident. I understand we are currently not in a full lockdown like other cities, states, and countries. Personally, we are practicing social distancing, and we are implementing self-imposed staying-at-home practices as much as humanly possible. Issue is, many are not. The last time I drove back to my home after dropping off a family member at their workplace, an employer that provides a critical function, I saw the small in-neighborhood park filled with 25 to 30 people of all ages. I stopped and parked to count from about half a football field away. That being said, Mayor Jen Daniels recently stated that the medical authorities have explained to her that we have not yet reached what is considered the critical time to initiate a lockdown, that more people need to contract the illness to build some kind of immunity. Can the mayor please expand on this critical time and how this ties into keeping businesses in major areas of human congregation operational? Second, I have Michael Hancock. I am writing to express my desire to have the council meeting that is currently scheduled to take place on March 24, 2020 postponed until the public is able to attend. There are agenda items that specifically affect myself and the residents of Vista Dorado. Thank you for your consideration in this important matter. Lori Sorles, she's a Gilbert resident. I am concerned that we are not doing enough to stop the spread of COVID-19. I understand that the economic effects of our social distancing is taking a tremendous toll, but if we don't lock things down tightly, we could look like China or Italy in a matter of a few days, eventually leading to hundreds of thousands of infections and thousands of deaths. Look at Italy and how they completely mishandle this crisis. They are paying a very high price for their lack of stringent lockdowns and confusing messaging. Hong Kong is also in trouble yet again because they sent people back to work way too soon. I feel that the longer we delay facing the inevitable restrictions, the longer we will be on lockdown, the greater the economic impact, and the longer this epidemic will plague our state, country, and world. Is Gilbert doing enough? Is Governor Ducey doing enough? Is the president doing enough? Then we have Jerry McBee, he is a Gilbert resident. Madam Mayor Jen Daniels, I will try to keep these messages short and to the point. Of course, you know I'm long-winded and don't know when to shut up. Now that we're all affected by this virus, like the millions of people within the United States because of this coronavirus, while it is an inconvenience to many of us who like to attend a council meeting and jump on our elected officials to include you, I do understand why we have the need for concern by all to follow the CDC guidelines of gatherings. We saw where the governor issued a proclamation outlining the dues and dollars for the general public as it relates to this virus. We also see where the need to keep a minimum distance is a factor in controlling and preventing the spread, and there's no question that this works. In my neighborhood, called Brentwood Acres, it is pretty laid-back, quiet little space in Gilbert. I have lived here with my family for over 37 years. During that time, we have raised our family here, and we have gone to a grand family of 27, which includes our adult children and 14 grandchildren. Cutting to the chase, let's get to the subject of the matter. Our neighborhood across the street has a large open area on the side of their house, which is standard for the neighborhood. They have developed a wedding planning business run from their home with a space landscape for large events. Multiple times a month, they hold receptions, parties, and actual wedding ceremonies. Most of the time, we have just ignored it, even though we do gripe a lot about some excessive noise issues and jamming our streets with cars. The parking even blocks driveways and doesn't allow a pickup truck access down our road. Note, this occurs during the warmer seasons of the year and nice weather. There are times they do two or three of these a month, but generally, there is one in cooler times. The number of people who normally attend these things may bring 20-plus cars and two or more per car, while this week, we had 35 cars spread along our street. I asked the owners if they were aware of the restrictions made by the governor on number of people gathering in one place. They looked at me like a deer-in-the-headlights thing. You wonder what planet they are living on, but they were totally unaware of anything going on around them, and we're talking 150 people probably present at the time. Or they simply choose to ignore them in order to continue making money from these venues. Not wanting to get into a contentious argument, they're on the spot, I walked back home and called the Town of Gilbert Police non-emergency number and asked for someone to come out and make an assessment of what was going on and to make them aware of the governor's executive order limiting the operations of certain activities. I explained to the police operator the situation we had and the reasons for my call. Almost before I could get all of my words out, I was met with, "We don't enforce any restrictions of what the governor says, and we don't enforce any executive order by the governor. You need to call the governor's office on Monday and state your concerns with that office." "Check further," they further explained to me, "that since it was an executive order, not a law, and was not passed by the Arizona Senate, we are not enforcing anything of that." It felt like almost, "Go away and don't bug me." During that same call, I asked for an officer to come out and check our street to see if an ambulance or fire truck could make it up and down that road without being impeded. Am I wrong in thinking that the government of the State of Arizona has the authority, or the governor of the State of Arizona has the authority, which he has utilized as an executive order, which I had all the teeth that it needed to enforce this order by Arizona state statutes? My question is, did you and council authorize that statement, and if so, why?
Thank you, Lisa. Is that complete, all of the communications from citizens? All right. I just wanted to, for the public, I'll just move up the update now. Please go to our website, GilbertIsie.gov/covid19, for all the up-to-date information that we have as it relates to this. I did reply, Jerry McBee sent that to me in an email, so I have replied to him already. And I don't believe there's additional items that I can respond to at this time, but I would ask that people visit our town website for the most up-to-date information that we have.
Mayor Daniels, could you ask for the people that are on the phone, if there are any callers that want to communicate?
Sure. Okay. For those who have called in, we will unmute all of you for just a moment, and if there is anyone who wishes to speak under communications for citizens, we will give you an opportunity to do so. We just ask for you to first state your name, and then we will put you in an order, so... You're all unmuted. I can hear all of you having lots of conversations, or your radio playing. Anybody wish to add to communications from citizens? All right, hearing none, we will re-mute everyone on the phone. We're learning. Thanks for being patient with us. Thank you, Chris. All right, it's my understanding, Tanya is now ready? Terrific. Sorry, Tanya, we can't hear you, so hang tight. We're gonna make sure we can, we can see your presentation now, we just need to be able to hear you.
I don't have options.
All right, we can hear you now.
Okay, awesome, there we go. Mike, I am really not this technically challenged. Okay, so I will start over. This is the first slide. This was the new, the new software that we implemented to compile our comprehensive annual financial report, and as I stated previously, we were able to do this within a two-month period, where normally, it takes municipalities, on average, approximately a year. So it's a great accomplishment, and we're excited that now that it's set up, we can just use it moving forward and not have an outdated system. So quickly, to go over the results of our audit, once again, we received a clean audit opinion, and there were no material weaknesses identified in our internal controls. And what that means to you as a governing body, to our taxpayers, to rating agencies, et cetera, is that the data in our financial report is reliable. It's reliable to make decisions upon, it's reliable to know what we're spending taxpayer funds on, et cetera. It's extremely good tool to use. In addition to the audit, the Government's Finance Officers Association has a program where we can apply to receive a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting award. And what this program is intended to do is to encourage state and local governments to go beyond the minimum reporting requirements of general accepted accounting principles and embody the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. To do so, we include a lot more information than just the basic financial statements, such as management discussion and analysis, which is a written form of overview of what the financials are saying. It's more helpful for people that aren't savvy users of government financial reports. And I am pleased to announce that we received this award again for the 28th year for our 2018 CAFER. I've submitted our 2019 CAFER for review, and I'm confident that we will receive this award again. This, along with a clean audit opinion, just speaks to the quality of work of the accounting division and how great my staff is. A quick line to go over some significant changes that we made in financial reporting and fund structure. For brevity's sake, I didn't include the details on this slide, but if you have any questions and want to sit down in person, I would be happy to sit down with anybody to go over the CAFER in greater detail and show me the changes from year to year. We were able to make these changes because we took the opportunity, when we revamped the new chart of accounts for the ERP system. We looked at what we were doing and saw three main areas that we can improve upon. The first being increased transparency, and this mainly relates to our capital project funds. Our previous capital project funds, the naming of them, was highly focused on what revenue was being reported in them, and not really telling the end user what we were spending that money on. For example, our old capital project funds were general obligation, capital project, and system development, the capital project funds. So those, both names are types of revenue, which are already disclosed in the revenue section of the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. of the Statement of Revenue, Expenditures, Intenses, and Fund Balance, or easier said, income statement for a government. And so, we're being very redundant with the revenue without telling a lot about what we were spending. So in order to remedy that, we created three new capital project funds named Streets and Traffic, Parks, and Municipal Facilities Capital Project Funds. And so, you're, just by looking at the basic financial statements, you can see how much we're spending on streets, parks, and municipal facilities. What that also did was take a large chunk of capital outlay out of the general fund. Prior, any general-funded capital outlay was being recorded in the general fund as an ongoing expenditure. And this is what has really increased our comparability with other municipalities and brought us more in line with Gatsby. Because now, what's showing in the general fund, which is the main operating fund of any governmental entity, is just our regular operating expenditures. Having that large capital outlay really was throwing rating agencies off, and we often had to do a lot of explaining on why our CAFER was different than everybody else's. So to that end, it makes it easier for any users to read, and then we're also just improving on best practices. Just quickly go over accomplishments that my staff did during 2019. We recorded almost $420 million in revenue from all sources, which was a 13% increase over prior year. We sent over $50,000 vendor payments, total $299 million, which was an 11% increase over prior year. We paid all employees every two weeks without exception. We recorded capital additions of almost $46 million, which was a 28% increase over prior year. So Susanna's group is obviously doing a lot of work. And as I stated before, we implemented that new CAFER reporting software in two months, where the industry average was one year. And then, quickly, I just wanted to give you a look into what we're going to be doing in the future in the county. I won't go into the details of the slide for brevity's sake, but now that we have the ERP implementation under our belt, we're going to look at other technologies that we can leverage to take away some of the busy work and really let us provide the increased internal customer service that we want and we want our customers to have. Just a couple examples, we're looking at outsourcing some payroll function. We currently do verifications of employment for all employees, which takes a lot of time but doesn't provide a lot of value to the town. So we're looking to outsource that, which will not only give our staff more time back to where it can help our internal customers, but it also helps town staff because they can get this information every day of the week versus only the days that we're working. And the biggest piece that I'm excited about is we are actually going out a town-wide training program for our new ERP software. This has never been done in the town. Typically, when we implement ERP software, we do a really great job at GoLive and giving everybody the resources they need to accomplish their jobs. But we've fallen flat on continuing to build on that training, and we've used the old "train the trainer" approach, which, as you can imagine, over 20 years, has degated greatly. And so, we're excited to go out the first phase of that training program. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, or if you can unmute, or call me.
Thank you, Tanya. Any questions from the council? Tanya, I just want to applaud you and your team for the transitional work. I know that it was a heavy lift to change over our entire system over the last year and the work that you did to get our CAFER ready. So thank you, and thank you for leading the team in that transition. Patrick, did you want to add anything? I know it's been a tremendous undertaking.
Yeah, it has, Mayor, and I would just echo your comments that Hockin and the entire finance department and Tanya, as our accounting manager, they did an exceptional job with this. There was a lot of moving parts to this, which I won't bore you with the details today, but it was no easy undertaking, and they did a fabulous job in the midst of also doing our annual audit and another clean audit year. So, very proud of them and the work they've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you. Next, we have Corey Arbusi, the partner on our audit, and he's going to present.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels. I'll do a quick audio check here as we get things going. I am looking to upload my content here, so I'll get that up on screen and see if we can get that going for you.
We can hear you just fine.
It looks like my presentation may be up. Do you see the presentation up as well, Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I will just try to provide a little bit more context to Tanya's presentation. So once again, thank you for having me, Mayor Daniels, and members of town council. It's an important part of the audit process to at least spend a little bit of time with the auditors and give us an opportunity to answer any questions you may have, truthfully, as much as us providing information on the audit itself. So just a little bit of a background here on the audit process. It really begins in May. Once the engagement letter is signed, we begin our initial planning of the audit and what includes setting up our audit programs, our working papers, getting preliminary financial information to kind of set up what we're gonna do for the year. This year, our site visits were in August, then a couple in January, and those were a little bit later than they typically have been in the past, and that was due to the implementation of the ERP system that took up some of the town resources more near year end and just kind of pushed the audit out a little bit. We fully expect next year to get back on a regular cycle for next year. But although while we're doing site visits at various times, we're also doing nowadays, as you can see, meetings and everything else a lot more remotely. So a lot of audit procedures actually performed while we're not on-site, probably as much as we do when we're on-site. And the audit reports were issued just here in February, and a little bit of information as far as approximate staff hours it takes to perform the audit. We have any -- there's six different individuals working on the audit, but four primary individuals, including myself and the audit manager, who was on-site. Next slide, just some examples of audit procedures we perform. By no means is this all-inclusive, but just to give, once again, a little bit of context to some of the things we do while we're on-site or performing the audit. Obviously, looking very closely at your bank and investment accounts, gouging a good part of the revenues, testing controls. This year, we kind of focused on development services, permits processes, but then each year, we're looking at other areas as well, including disbursements. We've really expanded in recent years in looking at credit card transactions as well as travel reimbursements. And another thing we've been doing in recent years is just using powerful tools for technology, data analytic software to look at some of the expenditures in great detail, journal entries, looking for keywords on journal entries, and also getting databases for employees and vendors and just kind of comparing to see if there's any unusual, unexpected relationships there we should be looking into. And then, Tanya mentioned the capital asset addition, so obviously, looking at the supporting documents to support those additions for the year. One thing, just an example, just to provide a little bit of context to some of the procedures we perform, I'll go over quickly the audit reports we've issued, and I'll go in order that they're provided in the agenda packet. So the first one is what we call an audit communication to those charged with governance, and I believe that's on page four of the packet section, anyway. And it's on our letterhead, and it's really a few pages that really just discusses the audit, our approach, if there's any particular items that you, as a governing body, should be aware of, such as sensitive estimates. Talks a little bit about allowance or doubtful accounts, some of the estimates related to your claims accounts or pensions. If there were any difficulties performed in the audit, encountered in the audit, which there were none, we'd be required to report that to you. Audit adjustments, if there was any disagreements with management. So really, just kind of outlined some key concerns for communications to you, as a governing body, that may not be in an audit report. These are things that are kind of outside of that report that would be important for you to know as a governing body. It's quite lengthy because we do include the engagement letter, as well as the management representation letter in there, just so, once again, for informational purposes, so you can see what that engagement letter reads like and what the representations made by management were. The only thing I really want to highlight particularly in this letter is we did identify what we call deficiency during the audit. There are various levels of deficiency. This one was kind of what we'd consider more, just more informational. And when we were looking at capital assets, the town receives a significant amount of developer contributions, and there's a process the town has to go through in staff to -- because typically, that number's not real detailed, and your county records are detailed. So it requires a process to get to all these developer contributions in the right asset buckets, so to speak. And just in that process, we identified it, and just how the system was being used in certain settings, there was an overstatement related to some of the various streets projects. We identified that, communicated that, it was adjusted, and the town is working on processes to ensure that doesn't happen in the future. So with that, Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and see if there's any questions related to that particular document, then I can quickly go through the remaining ones, but I just want to touch base, open up for any questions if there were on that initial audit communication or the deficiency we noted during this year's audit.
I don't see any questions. If you could wrap up your presentation in about two more minutes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I can do that, Mayor, not a problem. So the last few items that were included in your packet are the comprehensive annual financial report itself. There's just some of the listed areas or sections of the report. Tanya mentioned the CAFER program, all the additional information, so the introductory section, combining section, and statistical section is all additional information provided that would not be in a normal set of financial statements. The last two items are the expenditure limitation report and single audit reporting package. The expenditure limitation report is to meet statutory requirements. It goes to the auditor general to demonstrate you're spending within the limitations that have been set for you through the expenditure limitations of the town. The last item is, since the town does receive a decent amount of federal funding, we do look specifically at some of your federal programs, more specifically, your community developments block grant, and ensure it's in compliance with the federal program requirements for that program. That's the mayor. Just, once again, our responsibility is to you as the governing body, although we work closely with management. There's our contact information, myself as the engagement partner, the audit manager. And if there's any questions on the audit process, the information we look at, or wanting to know more about the audit itself, please, I encourage you and other members of council to reach out to us.
Thank you. Appreciate that and all the work that went into this, and for accommodating new technology. Thank you. All right, moving on, we move to our consent agenda this evening. Vice Mayor, are there any requests to pull agenda items?
Yes, Mayor, there are. Request to pull item three, item 13, item 20, and item 23. That, I will make a motion that we approve.
There were some comments on item 25.
Oh, yes, including the comments on item 25, yes.
Let's remove that from the consent agenda then, and we'll make sure. Yep.
Remove 25 also. With that, I'd move approval of items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 12A, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23A, 24, 26, and 27.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Amy, will you vote by acclamation, please?
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Thank you, Amy, Councilmember Yentes. All right, that moves us to agenda item three. Who wished to pull that?
Councilman Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. For those on the call, this item has to do with a program in the town where we subsidize low-income housing, and particularly with the economic climate that we have now that's particularly concerning if we take from someone that might be struggling and subsidizing somebody else. And I know we all like to help and contribute, but would like to vote on this separately, Mayor. Not in support of this particular program, although certainly contribute in other ways and help those in need. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Is there a motion? Oh, Councilmember Yentes, did you want to say anything on agenda item three?
I'm okay, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Vote to approve. And a second?
Second.
Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries with a 4-3 vote. That moves us to agenda item 13?
13. Councilman Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. This item, for those that are listening in, has to do with the recycling program that we have. And Patrick, I appreciate your team. I know that we've had to delay some of the briefing here, and I know it's hard to kind of make a decision on a contract that we haven't really had a strategic level discussion on. I know that's coming up. Mayor, my position on this is, it sounds like it's worth approving, but I'd just like to put the caveat out there that I do have significant interest in what other options that we have here, just like we talked about in the fall retreat. But if I understand from the feedback from staff, there is an opportunity to withdraw from this. Should we change your mind on the direction of this program within a seven-day period? Jessica also informed me that really, this is a viable program through the end of this fiscal year, and if we continue with this current contract into July, then we would need to raise rates or appropriate other money to cover the gap there. So I'm looking forward to that meeting. I know that there's been a little bit of disruption. I'm okay moving this, just with some of those caveats, and just wanted to be able to say that separately, Mayor, but thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just wanted to echo those thoughts, and understanding that there definitely is still a will to carry on with this program in the community, as well as surrounding communities, I believe. And it's a matter of identifying those markets now, and I'm looking forward to Jessica finding a creative way to continue this.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
No moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Amy?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That moves us to agenda item 20.
Councilman Taylor?
Mayor, I'm on a roll, sorry about all the extra time. Wanted to just vote separate on this. I think I've said my piece on the federal grant, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Can you use your mic, Councilmember Ray?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. I realized just after the last vote that I probably should be noting anyone that is dissenting, for those who are just calling in because they can't see our voting board. So in that instance, Councilmember Taylor was the dissenting vote. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item 23.
Councilman Taylor?
Mayor, one of the pleasures of working with this group is, this health trust really has the best intent of keeping the health and wellness of the group, and this program is very, very well-managed. And when we looked at some of these exceptions, or these additions, excuse me, let me frame it up that way. I certainly support existing program, and then I also voted for the three items to be added. And then, you know, a couple of weeks went by and the world changed a little bit. The thing that I'm concerned about is, you know, are we just gonna have to look at rolling these back in about a year? If we put something in and then having to take it away, just given some of the hard decisions that we're gonna make? decisions that we're going to make, the disruption that that'll have. I certainly see the case for some of those. So I, I think what I'd like to do, if, if, I don't know if other people certainly approve getting the medical plan, um, moved out, I think, although there's some increased costs, I think it's very, very well managed. There's good information and there's excellent providers for the town, but I am reticent to approve some of these additional costs, uh, just given some of the hard decisions that might be coming down and maybe having to roll them back and not sure if that would cause any disruption and, um, some employees that might be participating in some of this. So I did talk to Chris about language to, um, you know, move it, just accepting out these three particular additions, but that's my, that's my thought, and if that's the will of the council, I'm happy to, to move that.
As the representing member of the Health Trust, do you have questions you need Kristen to answer on our behalf, or are you just suggesting an alternate plan here?
Suggesting an alternate plan. Kristen and I had a couple of good discussions earlier today.
Okay. I think Kristen's on the phone. It sounds like she's unmuted right now. Kristen Drew from our talent team, are you on the phone?
Mayor and council, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you communicate with us?
I'm happy to answer, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. I did speak with budget, I did speak with, uh, Councilmember Taylor. We're, we're still comfortable with the recommendation. However, like I said, I'm happy to answer questions and will certainly defer to Mayor and Council in this decision.
I think I'm a little bit at a loss because I don't know what you're proposing.
Okay, so I'm proposing approving the amendment as published, accepting out items one, two, and three, which are additions to the plan for this year going forward. So that's the orthotics, expanded acupuncture, chiropractic, and the addition of domestic partner coverage, just accepting those three, but everything else moves forward as published.
So when you had discussions about this at, um, the Health Trust meeting, which is really where the experts in the room are, you guys all voted to move this forward to the council?
That's correct. I voted as well as a member of the trust. And, and the difference is, is timing, right? The world changed between the time we voted and now, and just seeing how we may be looking to roll this back.
But it's my understanding there is no change in any premiums even with those additions.
And, and Kristen can talk to you, the additional costs, if you, in the packet, there'd be an additional cost of $11,000 for the orthotics coverage, another 11 for the expanded chiropractor and acupuncture. And, and that may very, very well be something that I could support to move forward, but then, uh, the domestic partner is 253 to the, to the plan. So you're left, roughly looking at about 280 of additional costs, but to me, it's more of the disruption of rolling that back if, you know, we have to start giving haircuts to things like this.
So the Health Trust funds itself, though, right? It's a, we're a self-insured community. I sat on the Health Trust for a long time, so...
Right, yeah, you did for many years. Right. And, and the town subsidizes 80% of the benefit, so...
It's considered part of our compensation package. I, I feel comfortable that if this is the recommendation that came through from Health Trust with a unanimous vote, I, I'm not sure I want to undo that at this moment. Obviously, there are going to be major budget conversations, but if, it's my understanding that budget has already had that conversation at this point. I don't know that I want to undo what a separate body came and brought forward, um, at this moment. I'm not sure that's the right thing to do, so I'm looking for, I understand the recommendation, I disagree. So I think at this point, if others want to contribute to the conversation, great. If not, we need a motion.
Mayor, I agree with you and your assessment of the situation. I think if this is the recommendation that came and, um, that we should move forward with it.
You want to make that a motion? Sure.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Councilmember Taylor dissenting. That moves us to Agenda Item 25. I understand there's a couple of requests from the public on this agenda item. We generally don't, um, accept public comment during consent, but given the circumstances that we're in, I think it might be helpful for the public to be able to contribute here. There is one caveat that I'd love for us to get some legal advice on. This is a final plat, and perhaps, uh, our attorney, Chris Payne, um, there's been several emails from residents who live in communities surrounding this particular final plat that is before us, and they are asking us to make some modifications to that. Chris, do you want to touch on the legalities of us making changes at a final plat?
Yes, Mayor Daniels, council members. Because this is a final plat, it's not appropriate for conditions to be made. Those conditions, the council and planning commission had the opportunity to add conditions during the rezoning process, which has already been through the process.
How about, do you want to touch on what a final plat is? That might be a helpful statement to make.
Yes, Mayor. So a final plat is just the engineering schematic of, of the neighborhood, of the development. It shows the easements that are going to be set forth, the rights-of-way, the different, um, public improvements and the like. So it's an engineering document, usually drafted by engineers and stamped by engineers.
Thank you. And I've had several conversations with staffed, uh, over the last couple of days, and they have affirmed that the final plat meets the conditions, uh, that were spelled out during the zoning and approval process previous. So I just want to make sure that that statement was made. Vice Mayor?
I'd just point out that we do have some documents that were submitted with this item that are title conditions to add to the enclave at Madera Park P A D. This is not the appropriate time to add things to the P A D.
Vice Mayor Anderson, those documents actually were attached to the letter that I was going to read from one of the, the people.
We'll have you do that in just a moment, Lisa. Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
I was going to say what was already been said by yourself and the town attorney, that, uh, I know some of the concerns of the neighbors, and rightfully so, were concerned about fences, um, access, uh, smoke tree, et cetera, and all of those are exactly the same in this final plat as they were, um, when the council approved, uh, the zoning change some time ago. And so to, um, Ronnie and her great neighborhood, uh, all those protections are still in place.
Thank you. Lisa, will you read the comments, please?
Yeah. Uh, the first one's from Candlewood HOA. Mayor and council members, the first letter the Candlewood HOA sent to the Town of Gilbert regarding our objections and concerns with this proposed project, the enclave at Madera Park, and zoning change was in December of 2017. Originally, the site was zoned SF7, and the request was to change the zoning to SFD. As the project has morphed and moved along through the system, our HOA board and dozens of individual residents have expressed their fears and frustrations with any development within the retention basin located on the south end of the site. Some of the objections regarding this project that the community, community expressed from the very beginning are traffic and parking. The Candlewood HOA does not want any street or pedestrian access to Smoke Tree Road, which is a small residential street with homes facing the road. Flooding. The five acres along Smoke Tree Road was designed as a retention basin for Candlewood HOA and rentals. The community was assured by Craig Proudy and his attorney, Adam Bowe, that there would be no vehicle or pedestrian access to Smoke Tree Road and that the fence line would remain the same, with the exception of an emergency entrance that can only be accessed by first responders and that the gate would be secured with a lock, knock box. When it came to flooding, the problem would be solved with the underground storage tanks and that the project was being designed for single-family homes being built and sold by Porchlight Homes. Just a few months after the town council approved the zoning change to SFD and the accompanying pad, Porchlight Homes sold the property to AMH Development LLC, Americans Homes for Rent. The Candlewood HOA is concerned, especially in the current economy, regarding the long-term financial stability of AMH, American Homes for Rent. Is AMH fully bonded and insured for the enclave at Madera Park project? We would like to ask also that AMH be held to the same requirements as Porchlight Homes and that the first thing to be completed in the development would be the dry wells and retention basin. The Candlewood HOA needs assurances from the developer as well as from the Town of Gilbert that the safety of the existing neighborhood comes first regarding the retention basin, functioning dry wells, and secure fencing. The Candlewood HOA asks that the original conditions and stipulations that we ask be included in the P A D regarding the fencing and access to Smoke Tree Road be honored. Thank you for your time and commitment to our community. Candlewood HOA Executive Board, Veronica Ross, Mike Graffio, Maria Woodbury, Archimedes Dennis, and Kelly Oxford. And that is the document that had the, the drawings that you had in your packet. Next, we have Gina Adamy. This letter is, oh, and she's a Gilbert resident. This letter is in regards to the final plat approval for the enclave at Madera Park owned by AMH Development LLC. I wanted to reach out as a resident to reiterate and support the letter sent by the Candlewood HOA Executive Board. I moved into Candlewood a year ago, and I'm concerned at the major changes this development could bring to my neighborhood. I am a water resources engineer, and as the parcel was originally designed for retention of storm water from Candlewood, I would like to impress upon the importance of requiring the drainage design of the lot to support the same flood retention as in existing conditions. This should include a maintenance plan so that the basins or storage tank will be clean to prevent buildup of sediment and vegetation, which will reduce overall storage. Any reduction to the volume of storage would put the existing communities at risk. As expressed by the Candlewood HOA, my neighbors and I would like to ensure no pedestrian or vehicle access to our neighborhood from the new development and Smoke Tree Road and that the fence line remains as is. It is important to prevent changes to foot traffic, vehicle traffic, and parking. As the economy is currently hurting from the recent global crisis, I am concerned for the financial stability of the new development and the effect that the rentals will have on the existing residents and their properties. I would ask that you help us maintain conditions in Candlewood as much as possible. Please see the Candlewood HOA's original conditions and stipulations and help us to best support our community.
Thank you. Is there another?
Uh, this is Barbara Schmidt-Rorick and Gary Rorick. They're Gilbert residents. Dear council members, my husband and I have been residents of Gilbert since 1991 in the Candlewood community. I'm writing to convey to you my thoughts on the enclave at Madera Park development that will affect our neighborhood community. I'm requesting that the following be considered upon your voting. One, that access to and from this new development not be allowed upon Smoke Tree Road. Our streets are very narrow. We do not have bike lanes. If a car is parked on the street on both sides, then it is extremely narrow for a car to drive through. Similarly, if a car has to pass with a car parked, then one vehicle has to pull over and wait until the other car passes. This would be detrimental to our children and safety on our streets. We understand that this would not include any emergency exits that are necessary for safety issues. Two, that any new development, development be completed in its entire entirety due to unforeseen circumstances due to the economy and the coronavirus. Presently, there are approximately 40 storm drains that are sitting on top of the property. Historically, we have had flooding in our neighborhood with all of the rain draining into where the new development would be building. These storm drains are so large that a person could walk through them. This is a safety hazard for our community. It is imperative that any developer complete burying these storm drains prior to our monsoon storms. Thank you for your consideration. One more. This is Bill and Ronnie Ross. They're Gilbert residents. Mayor and council members, we have lived in the Candlewood neighborhood next to the proposed development site since 1990. Over the last 30 years, the south side of the proposed development site along Smoke Tree Road has served as a retention basin for our neighborhood and surrounding area. Now that the new development is moving forward, we would like to be assured that the first item completed on the project is the retention basin and dry wells. The regular maintenance of this type of drainage system and dry wells will be vital to the safety of all the surrounding neighborhoods. Additionally, we have been assured by the previous owners that the fence line around the south end of the property will remain the same. Expect that for emergency-only locked gate. The streets on the south side, namely along Smoke Tree and Dodge, are narrow residential streets with homes facing the road. For the safety of our neighborhood, we'd like you to make sure that the original arrangements are honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We're going to need to give you a throat lozenge before this night is over, so... All right, that does complete the, um, public comment on that, and grateful we had a chance to hear that. Again, we will, we are not able to make any changes to a final plat. They are completed and, uh, conformed to the stipulations already set forth in the zoning hearing and things we've already voted on. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Agenda Item 25.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy. That motion carries 7-0. All right, I think that completes our consent agenda this evening and moves us to the public hearing items. We need to do these one at a time according to our attorney. So we will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 28. Does anybody wish to make any statement or comment? And then we need to open to the public, so we will unmute all of the public lines. Anyone wish to make a statement?
Get to his line.
All right, we will close the lines. I will also close the public hearing and entertain a motion on Agenda Item 28.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote?
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, including Councilmember Yentes. Thank you. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 29. Anything from council? All right, we will open the public lines.
Um, can you tell us what the agenda, what those items are?
We are on Agenda Item 29. It's the adoption of an ordinance approving the annexation of approximately 3.08 acres located at the southwest corner of Lindsay Road and Lexington Street. The public hearing was held on August 15th, 2019. Any comments from the public? All right, we will close those lines, and I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Please vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That moves us to Agenda Item 30. It's a zoning case Z19-16. We're conducting a hearing and considering approval of the findings and adoption of an ordinance for Rivulon to rezone approximately 3.8 acres of real property, generally located at the southwest corner of Lindsay Road and Lexington Street, from Maricopa County Rural 43 Zoning District to Town of Gilbert Business Park Zoning District, and to include the subject property into the existing Rivulon Planned Area Development Overlay Zoning District. Any comments from the council? All right, we will open the public lines. Any comments on Agenda Item 30? All right, we will close the public lines and close the public hearing on Agenda Item 30 and entertain a motion.
Prove.
Second. Please vote?
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. The next three, I know we have public requests to speak on, and so I will do these in a little bit different order. In fact, I think what I'll do is go to Agenda Item 34 next. I don't have any requests to speak from the public on those agenda items. Item 34 is the property acquisition. We're conducting a hearing and considering adoption of a resolution approving the acquisition of right-of-way and easement for a number of parcels. I will not read them all. For the work required within lands adjacent to baseline road, Fiesta to McQueen Waterline, that's our project from our CIP WA 1140. Are there any requests to speak by the council? All right, saying none, we'll open the public lines for Agenda Item 34. All right, we will close the public lines, hearing no comment, close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote?
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Agenda Item 35. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 35. We are conducting a hearing and considering adoption of an ordinance amending the Code of Gilbert by amending Chapter 10 Buildings and Construction Regulations. I'll leave it at that. But sufficient, Chris? All right, thank you. Looking to our town attorney. We will open the public lines for Agenda Item 34. We will open the public lines for agenda item 35. Any public comment? All right, we'll close the public lines, close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote. That motion, oh, Councilmember Yentes?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That moves us to agenda item 36. I will open the public hearing for the Code of Gilbert. We're conducting a hearing considering adoption of an ordinance amending the Code of Gilbert by amending Chapter 62 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 1 and General Section 62-2 Speed Regulations Related to Speed Limits Applicable to Public Streets in the Town. Are there any council comments on this agenda item? All right, we will open the public lines. Should have been a game show host or something. All right, we'll close the public lines, close the public hearing and entertain a motion on agenda item 36.
Approval.
There a second?
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second on agenda item 36. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote and leads us to number 37. I will open the public hearing on the bonds. We're conducting a hearing and considering adoption of a resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of Town of Gilbert, Arizona General Obligation and General Obligation Refunding Bonds. I'll leave it at that. Is there any council comment on agenda item 37? Councilmember Taylor?
Okay, so hopefully this is the last time we're seeing this, but we'll see. So for the public, this is related to the public safety training facility. It was certainly sent to the voters, and the voters approved it by an overwhelming majority. And construction is proceeding. I'll just repeat what I've said in the past, why I'm objecting to this. Certainly support public safety. I think that's very vital. And certainly support the training facility. What I object to is the waste involved in this. I used literally some of the same suppliers and have already shared data that the same exact building can be built for about half the cost, if not even more than half the cost, number one. And that data has been available for a while. Also, what's discouraging is during the campaign for this, there were many people campaigning for this, that it wouldn't raise your taxes. And there was information about this, the tax rate, which of course is misleading, right? Because we don't pay the rate, right? We actually pay whatever comes in the mail. And that amount that's coming to the mail is going to be more than before. And you can reference Councilmember Cook's presentation on that when he showed the math on that, right? He was for it, but he was okay with the tax increase. But the fact that it was sold to the voters as not being a tax increase was just flat-out misleading, and that's another thing that really bothers me about this. And I just don't like going forward with something that was not very clear. And Bridget, you talked about that. Mayor, you talked about that this wouldn't be a tax increase, so I hope that you'll vote to limit the increases taxes because this will be an increase in tax. We had the same discussion because the levy, if this is approved, will be going up on our taxpayers. And in the economy right now, this is a brave new world. This is not the time to raise taxes. There's going to be many people in our community that are going to be hurting and raising taxes, even if it's small. We do have high priorities on raising taxes on a project that reasonably could be done, you know, within about a $40, $50 million bill. That's a lot of money. We could have built a beautiful training facility. I talked to the suppliers. I've worked with them. I know their pricing and bidding and have seen those quotes. But the fact is, we're gold-plating this tremendously. Now it's going to cost over $130,000, maybe less. I guess the only silver lining here is there couldn't be a better time to go to the market for this. That's the good and bad thing about it. But to lay on a tax increase at this time is just so imprudent, especially when it was sold to the public with as not being a tax increase. That is just not how we should act in government. And so, of course, I'm going to be voting no on this, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Let's go to the public. We'll open the public lines on agenda item 37. Are any comments from the public on agenda item 37? All right, we will turn off the public lines. I know we've had lots of discussion about this over the years. I'm grateful for the voters who saw the value in this, and I'm also grateful for all of the data and information, all of the experts that we have hired on staff that have helped us to understand the dollar amounts and helped us to communicate that through their public. I ran the campaign for that. I was very clear about what this is and what this isn't. We are keeping the rate the same. The levy is going up. We've never denied that. What is different is that we have added 10,000 people to our community, and so the burden for this is spread out, and this is the right time and still the right thing to do for our community. So I can appreciate Councilmember Taylor's comments this evening. I've heard them all before, and I stand by what statements that I made and the integrity with which I said them in the campaign and also today. So with that, I will close the public hearing on that agenda item 37 and entertain a motion.
May I move to approve item number 37?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
No.
That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. That's Councilmember Yentes and Councilmember Taylor dissenting. Thank you. All right, we're going back to the other three agenda items, and I'm going to take them in a little bit different order than where they are listed because I expect that agenda item 32 will take longer than the other ones. So for efficiency's sake, we will do number 31, then 33, and then 32. 31 is the zoning hearing for Z19-17. It's a hearing and considering approval of the findings and adoption of the ordinance for Burj Val Vista North. I understand we have several individuals on the phone, including one public comment. Are you reading the public comment for us tonight, Lisa? All right, we will open the public hearing on agenda item 31 and hear the public comment.
All right, this is from Mark Parrish, and he is a Gilbert resident. I'm writing to express my desire to have the town council agenda items for March 24, 2020 delayed until I and others can publicly attend. Specifically, I have a strong opinion about item 31, the rezoning and development of Burj North, and feel the need to be present to speak about it. Thank you for your consideration for this request.
Thank you, and I can appreciate that. I understand the angst, but I do believe that there are more opportunities to communicate with your council than ever through technology, but also through reading an email such as the one it sounds like you received, Lisa, to be read this evening. We have been instructed by the AG's office, and maybe I could ask Chris Payne to touch on the AG's statement as it related to public meetings.
Mayor Daniels, council members, about a week and a half ago, as after the state issued its emergency orders, the Arizona Cities Attorneys Association were having communications about how that would impact public meetings. Looking at the statutes as a whole, it seemed pretty clear to us that we could hold public meetings and have public meetings via technology in a remote way. The cities, just to confirm, asked Attorney General Bernovich for confirmation and for an opinion on that matter. Within a couple of days, the Attorney General issued an informal opinion concluding the same that we had, that as long as proper notice is given and there's as many means as we can get that's reasonable for the public to participate, a remote meeting, attendance of the public through remote meetings is in compliance with the state's open meeting laws.
It's my understanding the state legislature has just gone through a similar process with all of their hearings and ballot measures that they've just taken over the last little while, as they did not allow the public to physically attend anything at the state Capitol. I think we are consistent with that as well, adhering to the same open meeting law, and of course, want to hear from our residents. Public comment has always been important to us and will continue to be important to us. So with that, are there any additional items on agenda item 31? Okay, we have one individual who would like to speak through the WebEx service. So is it Jenna, you said? Jenna, your line will be open here?
Mayor, will there be a time limit on that?
There will be, just as per usual. Jenna, your line is open. Jenna, your line is open, and we can see that you are not speaking at the moment. Maybe you're on mute on your own phone? Is that a possibility?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Now we can, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't know I needed to press unmute. Thank you, Mayor Daniels and council, for letting me speak tonight. I'm a Gilbert resident. I'd just like to address my biggest concern with the Burj rezoning, which is actually gating the whole community, especially the northeast and south entrances. This community is closely tied with the new Chandler Elementary School being built, and I feel like it should be accessible to interact with the elementary school community. I really want to clarify that I'm not talking about school traffic through the neighborhood because the school is designed to have the traffic flow off of Ocatillo for pickup and drop-off. But what I'm talking about is where the kids go after school to play, the parks, the green spaces, friends' houses, using the neighborhood really as a community center point. My friend, a fourth-grade teacher at Spectrum Elementary for many years, said students would often meet up at the neighborhood park after school and hang out, play, and build friendships. And this isn't going to happen in a closed-off gated community. Second, gating the community, gating communities really creates a division that doesn't encourage broader community engagement. Members of the gated community become more residents of their specific subdivision than less the town of Gilbert as a whole. Even a systematic study done by the University of Glasgow on gated communities summarized that in large gated communities, people are able to spend most of their time in them, and when they leave, they do in cars, which heighten the sense of separation with the surrounding communities. Gating the neighborhood adds an air of exclusivity with nothing really warranting it to be exclusive as there are a wide range of housing sizes and prices that are planned. Even the hamster dairy section south of that, which is also part of the overall design, is only being gated on the west side with the higher-end homes. The gates also create an illusion of safety and security, but with such a large area, anyone can get in who really wants to get in. And then Marike mentioned that they wanted to protect their several million-dollar investments, such as pools, rec centers, and parks, but any private facilities can be gated separately without affecting the entire 160 acres, just like Val Vista Lakes and Agrotopia, which are high-end neighborhoods with no main gates. And then finally, gating doesn't really seem to support the goals and policies of Gilbert's general plan for land use in the Santan area. For example, the Land Use and Growth Areas Policy 1.2 to aim and create neighborhoods that connect to the broader community. But putting a new community, especially one associated with a school, behind gates just creates more of a micro-community, which appears directly opposed to this policy. I also question how it supports the circulation goal 3.0, the policy 3.2, that connects neighborhoods and school sites, et cetera, with sidewalks, trails, and bikeways. So the connecting sidewalks may be built, but when the gates limit the access and create an unnecessary challenge for school travel and also general pedestrian and bicycle use. I believe there are some solutions that can work for both Marike and the greater Gilbert community. The first, and what I would prefer, is to only gate the western side where the.
Jenna, I'm going to interrupt real quickly. Your timer just went off, so if you could wrap up in about 20 seconds?
Absolutely, I will.
Thank you.
They could also gate enclaves of the neighborhood, or they could gate the whole community but have the gates open dawn till dusk as the pedestrian gates are going to be. I'm only concerned about this because I do care how South Gilbert is developing and what it's going to become, and I really want the best for our community. I really want to challenge the council to consider what's best for the Gilbert community as a whole, and just want to thank you for this time.
Thank you. We have the applicant on the phone as well. Does the applicant want to respond verbally to the question about gates and gating the community?
Mayor Daniels, members of council, I hope you can hear me. This is Brennan Ray, 702 East Osborne, here on behalf of the applicant, Marike Holmes, at least virtually present.
Thank you, we can hear you.
Perfect, wonderful. I shall be brief. There's a couple of points that I would point to in terms of the comments that were made. If the council were to scrutinize the general plan as well, there is a number of policy decisions that talk about gating communities. And if you look closely at those various policy considerations on gating communities, it's to ensure that the natural flow of traffic from arterial and collector streets is uninterrupted and that the community remains accessible to pedestrian traffic. And if I was to put a slide up, you would see that the collector streets of Appleby and 148th Street surrounding the site on our north and western boundaries certainly are unaffected by our proposed gating. Additionally, there is a condition I within the packet and within the proposed zoning ordinance that essentially provides that all of the pedestrian gates within the community are to remain unlocked from dusk to dawn for the entire life of the community. And this requirement, these pedestrian gates are to remain open, are to be codified in the HOA documents, and with a specific prohibition on removal or modification of that provision by the declarant or the HOA board. So we are kind of going belt and suspenders as to ensuring that the pedestrian access remains open and that students wanting to go to the elementary school at the southwest side of our site at the corner of 148th and Ocatillo will be able to do so through those pedestrian gates. There is a main spine running through our community on a north-south access and an east-west access. It is actually an eight-foot-wide sidewalk that will allow students, people from not only our community but from the surrounding area, to be able to access and travel through our facility to the school. And so with that, I'm again happy to answer any additional questions, but we're certainly appreciative of staff and the Plannings Commission's unanimous recommendations to you and would request your approval tonight.
Thank you. All right, back to the council on agenda item 31. Any additional comments from the council? All right. Well, yeah. I see you needed to make a comment. Okay, so we will open up the public lines on agenda item 31 for any additional comment that we missed.
Yes.
You're all, you're all open on a public line.
I would like to speak.
Okay, will you please state your name on agenda item 31? Would the individual who'd like to speak on agenda item 31, please state their name and city of residence? I heard one individual say they wish to speak. All right, we're probably going to have to unmute everyone again and identify which caller that is. So let's unmute everyone. Will the individual who wishes to speak?
Karen Evans.
Karen Robbins? Can you state your name one more time? All right, we're going to call on you in just a second. We've identified you on our list, and we will unmute just you.
Okay.
Okay, you're ready. State your name and your city of residence.
Karen Evans, Gilbert.
Thank you.
My biggest concern, and I have, my husband and I have talked with the Town of Gilbert for many years about this, and I have written about this as part of the feedback on the Burj plat, is the, is putting in traffic calming along Appleby. They have done traffic studies along there, and there have been many issues of high rates of speed, up to 60 miles an hour along. up to 60 miles an hour along that road, and I don't see any provision for any kind of traffic calming along there. And it's a 25-mile-an-hour road. Currently, there are speed, there are speed humps there, they're not permanent, and I want to make sure that those, that traffic calming mechanisms are put in place there as part of this rezoning so that there, from, you know, along the Leighton Lakes Boulevard, you know, from Leighton Lakes all the way along Appleby to Velvista. Because there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of children, a lot of walkers, recreational, and then, and then people walking down to 148. And even without the sidewalks right now, there's just a lot of activity along those roads, and it's very dangerous. And but there's bicycles and-- So I would like, I really want to make sure that that gets implemented as part of this rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Appleby is a public street, it's my understanding? And the streets that are being built within this new subdivision are private streets? Are my, is my understanding?
Mayor, that's correct, because it is a gated community, it will be private streets.
Okay. Are there any improvements required by the developer on Appleby? Let's ask our planner in charge. I believe that's, is it Ashley?
No, this is Nathan.
Oh, Nathan, sorry, Nathan, you do not sound like Ashley. We'll ask Nathan to touch on any improvements on Appleby. Are they required by the developer?
Mayor Daniels, that's correct. So this development would improve the southern half of Appleby. The northern half is currently developed for two-way traffic. The, this development would improve the southern half of Appleby from 148 to Velvista. Touching on the point of traffic, you know, calming and things of that nature, I think that would be not something that this would be germane to this rezoning, but something that would be more applicable to our town engineer, town traffic engineer, looking into these issues and, you know, remedy that way.
Okay, thank you. We will ask our town engineer then to have that conversation separately from this zoning hearing, understanding that that needs to be discussed. And Karen, we will absolutely find a way to communicate that with you. In fact, we will ask that you send me directly an email so that I can capture your contact information and be able to respond to you. Thank you. All right, any other comments from council? And I didn't hear any other comments from the public. So seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 31 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, appreciate the applicant working with staff. Staff gave him some good feedback, and also from the planning commission, there was some good feedback. They did make a number of adjustments in there, appreciate what they did on that, but would move to approve as published in the documents before us.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. All right, as stated earlier, we will move to Agenda Item 33. This is the adoption of a resolution approving a minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 15.91 acres, generally located north of the northeast corner of Gilbert Road and Houston Avenue from general commercial to residential, 8 to 14 dual units per acre, and approval of the findings and adoption of an ordinance for the bungalows on Ash to rezone approximately 15.91 acres of real property, generally located north of the northeast corner of Gilbert Road and Houston Avenue from general commercial zoning district to multifamily low MFL zoning district with a planned area development overlay zoning district at PAD to modify the requirements for building separation and perimeter wall height. For visual reference, this is the site just north of Sam's Club on Gilbert Road. People probably understood that better than north of the northeast. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item 33. Do we have any requests? I thought we might. Lisa, will you read those requests?
Yes, ma'am. So this is Nicole and Jonathan Williams, they're Gilbert residents. Hello, we would like to express opposition to the planned project GP 19-09-Z 19-21, Bungalows on Ash, as Gilbert residents that reside less than one mile from this property. We respectfully oppose this due to the high volume of rentals that already exists within the two-mile radius of the proposed plot of land. There are 13 apartment, single-family complexes within the two miles, and six of them within one mile. With the revitalization, the heritage district, and the property value that has increased due to this becoming a highly-desired area, the opportunity to construct more homes to be sold with the intent to own rather than rent would be better, would better serve the community and those of us that already own in this area. Furthermore, due to the explosive growth in home development as seen in the southern parts of Gilbert, we feel it would be prudent of the town of Gilbert to reciprocate this growth on the northern end. Please take this into consideration as we continue to grow as a town. They listed recognized rental complexes for reference. Gilbert Greens Country Villa, Cambria, Sage Apartments, Park Meadow, Craft, Heritage Square, Olive East, Heritage Point, Avana Gilbert, Maddox Silo on Gilbert, and Trails at Harris. And then this item is from Kristy Doverett. She is a Gilbert resident, and it applies to Items 32 and 33. Thank you for being willing to hear the concerns of Gilbert citizens. I'm writing regarding the proposal for an apartment complex to be built at Cooper Road and Merrill Avenue, another housing plan for Gilbert Road and Houston Avenue. I live a little south of this area at Cooper and Guadalupe and already notice a significant increase in traffic over the past year. Additional building of high occupancy residential communities is really impacting us and not in a good way. There have been more homeless wandering our neighborhood and increased crime in the area, too. We do not need or want more housing to be built. We love Gilbert and what used to be our small-town feel. We miss the farmland south of us and the more open feeling around. Now things have gotten too congested with too much building up. I understand the need for development, but we would so much rather see new businesses and family-style restaurants come in than more housing and trendy eating spots that are too crowded and cost too much. Thanks again for listening to our concerns. Please vote no to the new housing zoning south of East Cooper Baseline in Gilbert, Houston.
Thank you, that completes? Terrific. I'm going to go ahead and we will ask the public on the phone for any additional public comment. And we will open those public lines beginning now. Any public comment on Agenda Item 33? Hearing none, we will close the public lines, thank you. We'll bring it back to council for any dialogue and conversation on Agenda Item 33. I see none at this time. I believe that applicant is also on the phone. Does the applicant wish to address anything by the, those who issued public comment? We'd be happy to take his response and just let him know that there's also no comment at this time from the council, so. I believe that's Sean Lake. Sean, are you on the phone? You are unmuted for us. Sean, you might need to unmute your own phone.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Wonderful. Sean Lake, here on behalf of the property owners and Kevin, in connection with the development there north of the Sam's Club, which is a good way to describe it, mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We have worked for many, many months, beginning, middle of last year, with the town staff on what to do with this site. As you're aware, this site was originally designed in the mid-'80s for a retail development, and it's waited around for many, many years for something to happen, and that never transpired. We worked with staff on various market studies and analysis on what would be a good use here, and present before the council a single-story detached residential housing community that is a gated community, a high-end community with high rents. It will be a very nice transition between many different uses at this location. You've got the Sam's Club to the south, you've got condos to the east, and offices, and medical office, a park, patio homes, fries marketplace, and a plethora of retail shopping along Baseline Road. And so we think this is a good middle-tier use with the single-story residential at this location. We think it's a good project. We worked extensively with staff on our site design so that it would have minimal impact on any, all of the surrounding uses, and we also made quite a few changes as a result of planning and zoning commission. So we think we bring before you a great plan, one that received this recommendation from the planning commission, as well as recommendation for approval by staff. And so we would ask you if you follow their recommendation and respectfully request you approve 33A and B. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Sean. Doesn't appear as though the council has any questions, so I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 33 and entertain a motion.
Move to approve, mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes, that motion carries with a 7-0 vote. We will move now to Agenda Item 32. I understand that our clerk has a long list. I'm actually thinking maybe we should be divvying those up. If you ever need a break, Lisa, I hope that you do pass, maybe not Patrick, he's not a great reader.
Second.
Judy, yeah, Judy would be great help as well. So Judy, if she needs some help, Lisa needs some help over here, if you wouldn't mind helping, that'd be great. Let's do the ones that have submitted first.
All right. Gilbert Town Council, my name is Barb Savoy, and this email--
I'm sorry, Lisa, I forgot to introduce the item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My apology. No, that was my fault. So Agenda Item 32, it is the general plan GP 19-05 and zoning hearing Z 19-15. So we are conducting this public hearing now. We are adopt, we are set to adopt a resolution approving a minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 8.63 acres of real property, generally located at the southeast corner of Cooper and Baseline Roads, from regional commercial land use classification to residential, 14 to 25 units per acre. And Section B, approval of the findings and adoption of an ordinance for PB Bell Gilbert Commons to amend a series of ordinance numbers pertaining to the southwest corner of Cooper and Baseline Roads planned area development and to rezone approximately 47.99 acres, generally located south of the southwest corner of Cooper and Baseline Roads, from 47.99 acres of regional commercial, all with a planned area development overlay zoning district, to approximately 39.36 acres of regional commercial and 8.63 acres of multifamily medium with a, all with a planned area development overlay zoning district. That is a lot of words, but essentially what I would like to just state is that southwest of the corner of Baseline and Cooper, we are looking at some vacant commercial properties without tenants and looking to convert a portion of that shopping center to a multifamily product. That is what's before us tonight. I hope I, that was a good synopsis.
Would it be helpful for those online to see a graphic while we hear some of the narration and--
Sure, that'd be great. Amy Thames, I believe, is the planner on this. And if Amy could just, we could transfer the screen to Amy. And Amy, if you wouldn't mind putting up a document that would give a visual for the public, that would be helpful for those that are watching and not just listening.
Good evening, mayor, I will get that up here right for you.
Thank you, Amy. In the meantime, we will ask Lisa to begin with the public comment.
My name is Barb Savoy, and this email represents the unanimous decision of the Board of Directors of Friends for Life Animal Rescue, located at 952 West Melody Avenue, Gilbert, to provide our opinion regarding the vacant commercial buildings directly to the east of our property line. All members of the Friends for Life Board of Directors are volunteers. My occupation is as a licensed realtor, and as such, the board typically requests I accept the role as committee chair for all real estate-related endeavors. On October 10, 2019, I met with Dan Tilton, Vice President of Acquisitions for PB Bell, and we shared each of our organization's development plans. After reviewing their proposed site plan layout for their luxury apartment community and presenting our intended use for the property currently under development at 1405 West Marvin, it is our belief that our projects will complement one another, and we would absolutely welcome their project as our immediate neighbor. Vacant commercial sites can invite unintended consequences. The site in question has been vacant for an extended period of time. Current world events are dramatically impacting business activities and some commercial businesses, both large and small, will not recover. The idea that after an extended period of time, attempting to fill the vacant space with another commercial tenant when businesses are closing their doors seems extremely unlikely. Our volunteer base is primarily female, as is our on-site caregiver, and from a safety standpoint, we would welcome occupied luxury apartments with tenants and property management staff versus vacant commercial space. There have been occasions when caregiving volunteers, who were walking dogs, have been approached by transient persons loitering in the area under circumstances that made them uncomfortable. Some volunteers have been known to carry an air horn or bear spray on their walks in the event they are approached again. We are planning to be in our current location for the indefinite future, so immediate property value is inconsequential. However, we do realize that an occupied luxury apartment complex would certainly provide more value to our property than commercial space that has been sitting vacant for a lengthy period of time. I apologize that current world events prevent my in-person appearance at this upcoming meeting on March 24, but my hope is any council members who have any questions regarding their position on the matter would contact me either by phone at 602-908-7177 or email at pr@azrenforlife.org.
Lisa, let's not, let's not read their phone numbers and email addresses just for the public. Thanks.
Okay, warmest regards. Next, we have Phil Long, who is a Gilbert resident. I oppose general plan GP 1905. It will reduce revenue, retail revenue in Gilbert's largest northwest retail center. Twelve reasons to deny GP 19-05. One, this property was part of a larger vision known as Gilbert's Crown Jewel, bordering along Mesa's boundaries. Past community leavers and visionaries projected this area as one of Gilbert's largest future revenue sources. Since the adoption of the 1994 general plan-- oh, number two, since the adoption of the 1994 general plan, over 1,000 acres of Gilbert's Crown Jewel has been amended from retail, commercial, industrial revenue to non-revenue residential, supporting maps included. Those maps were in your packet. Number three, retail land use is a major source of revenue maintaining our current tax rate. This is not a neighborhood issue, it's an issue for all Gilbert citizens. Number four, during neighborhood and P&amp;Z meetings, applicants stated there is no market for the empty buildings due to the available land in the area and current tenant leases. The applicant purchased the existing buildings and leases in 2012, knowing the land use was retail. Since that time, property to the north along Baseline Road is developing as retail, commercial, and industrial uses. This location can support retail. Five, the applicant is turning to the town and proposing multi-housing to relieve their burden, thus adding the burden to Gilbert taxpayers by reducing the potential retail revenue. Gilbert planning staff state that at the P&amp;Z meeting, a good retail center has a 200-to-1 revenue ratio every residential. Six, underperforming and/or vacant property is not a reason to approve a general plan amendment. The owner-investor of the property knew the land use when purchasing the property. The long-term vision of the land use should not be amended because a private business isn't satisfied with their purchase. Seven, any housing will impact adjacent industrial uses to the west and could lead to use permit denials. Eight, for unknown reasons, a few of the planning commissioners discuss property rights. Denying this general plan amendment does not deny the applicant their property rights. Nine, the town of Gilbert planning staff opposes this general plan amendment. Ten, the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce opposes this general plan amendment. Eleven, there is no benefit to Gilbert citizens in approving this amendment. Twelve, shop Gilbert and save Gilbert's retail tax base, but no on GP 19-05. Thank you, Phil Long.
So this is from Samantha Navatney, Tempe resident. Samantha says communication, I'm sorry, communication--
Samantha says, communication, I'm sorry, Communication from Citizens. Residential uses do not belong immediately adjacent to industrial zoning. This is an environmental justice lawsuit waiting to happen. Take Los Angeles as a case study. There is a reason why there are public health and environmental justice concerns with having residential use adjacent to the industrial uses. The commercial zoning was intended to buffer the industrial uses from residential, and it should remain that way. The center is the perfect opportunity for a visionary opportunistic developer. Commercial zoning is a prime location on the Gilbert border to be able to compete with Mesa and provide services in close proximity to the US 60. Multifamily zoning would be an inappropriate use. I agree with the Case Planner Staff Report recommendation, which is to deny the approval request. From Jennifer in Cardone, Gilbert resident. I wish to have this included in the meeting. My family shops at Kohl's on Cooper and Baseline and used to shop at the Sports Authority before they went out of business. Retail is changing, and the owners of the Gilbert Commons property should be able to adapt to those changes. Please vote yes on the Gilbert Commons changes to preserve the retail space on Baseline and keep this area from sitting vacant. And also from Jennifer in Cardone, Gilbert resident. I wish to have this included in the meeting. Please vote yes on Item 32. Not everyone in Gilbert wants to live in a single-family home for 30-plus years. Many younger workers in Gilbert and Chandler want to live close to work and restaurants in downtown Gilbert. From Ethan Hirschberger, Gilbert resident. Gilbert is a beautiful community, and we don't want to have vacant properties sitting for years bringing down the business in the areas. Support PB Bell and SkyWest in their request to redevelop the retail that has been sitting vacant for eight years. From Lexi Hancock, Gilbert resident. My family shops at Kohl's on Cooper and Baseline and used to shop at the Sports Authority before they went out of business. Retail is changing, and the owners of the Gilbert Commons property should be able to adapt to those changes. Please vote yes on the Gilbert Commons changes to preserve the retail space on Baseline and keep this area from sitting vacant.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Jed Craig, and I'm the Senior VP of Leasing at SiWest Development, the owner of the shops at Gilbert Commons, the 45-acre shopping center at the southwest corner of Baseline and Cooper Roads. My responsibility is entirely focused on enhancing the mix of retailers and other users in order to assure that a SiWest property is vibrant, relevant, and economically viable for years to come. I'd like to share a few thoughts with you on the matter you are considering this evening. Since acquiring the shops at Gilbert Commons in 2012, we have done everything possible to improve and preserve the retail center. It would be far more financially advantageous for us to simply retain and lease the vacant buildings along Cooper Road, and for nearly eight years, we have made every effort to re-lease and redevelop the vacant space without success. The challenges in the retail industry are well-known. The large commercial center format is under tremendous pressure, and the retail is in an extended state of contraction as e-commerce continues to absorb a more significant percentage of retail sales. This scenario even existed before the COVID-19 pandemic that is devastating the retail industry right now. The goal in repositioning the Cooper Road portion of the shopping center is consistent with an overall trend occurring nationally in this type of shopping center. The incorporation of residential uses into retail center is well-established as a complementary use, and it has been the unique benefit of helping support without competing with the existing retail shops. The plan you are considering this evening is not a quick fix to a simple problem or something we even considered when we purchased the property, but we firmly believe that this action will help retain and strengthen the shops at Gilbert Commons by maintaining the retail core along Baseline Road and solidifying the long-term viability of this center by right-sizing the retail experience. To achieve this objective, we are partnering with PB Bell, a premier residential developer, to develop a first-class multifamily community that will complement the retail center without negatively impacting the existing shopping center. Moreover, the additional residential in this area will work within existing leasing constraints by not violating the retailer's right to exclusive and prohibitive uses. The existing retail tenants see the addition of first-class multifamily use as complementary to their retail uses. It is also worth noting that all the major retailers in the center have approved this plan due to its considerate design, layout, parking, and synergy with the existing retail. When completed, the Gilbert Commons multifamily development will effectively eliminate the excessive vacancy along Cooper Road, avoiding the irreversible degradation of the retail perception of this area and leading to further vacancy within Gilbert Commons. Thank you for providing the opportunity to provide input on this item. SiWest strongly urges you to support the rezoning request and related general plan amendment request. Then we have Janet Keen. In light of the fact that there is a possibility of six of the seven council members being replaced, please defer the decision on the proposed apartments on Cooper and Baseline to the next council members. A petition survey was conducted with over 172 Gilbert residents responding. There were 158 against. Due to the COVID-19, we are not allowed to appear in person. This is not the best way for residents to respond. Here are concerns. Please do not respond with a standard response of "thank you for responding", but truly read the email and know the concerns. One, filling the vacant buildings will provide the town of Gilbert more revenue potential at 200-to-1 ratio in the form of taxes and employment. The apartment complex will provide less revenue for the town. Is this project what is best for Gilbert residents? Two, there is a need for dining, shopping, and entertainment options for neighborhood families or those who travel along Cooper. This makes it likely that Gilbert residents will continue to spend money across Baseline and Mesa to eat, shop, go to sports bar, and enroll in fitness centers. Three, there are already 17 apartment complexes within a two-mile radius of the project, roughly 3,200 apartment units. Do you really want 205 more apartments in a three-story complex? Is this really that important? Four, we know that City Planning Office made recommendations for changes to the initial complex proposal to make it more desirable to complement Gilbert's long-term goals. Changes were not made. Five, city planners who studied the project and who have recommended a denial, so should the city council. The Gilbert Chamber, oh, six, the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce is opposed to the apartment complex and loss of retail space. You, as a town council, should be concerned as well. Seven, the applicant is not a member of the community and therefore has no buy-in to helping the city. They purchased the land as it was zoned as retail and now asking that the entire complex be changed to multifamily. The applicant is also asking for numerous variances. Why? We have to ask why.
This is from Hayden Tenney, Gilbert resident. Please vote yes on Gilbert Commons zoning case. The retail center has shut down along Cooper, and the area has been vacant for eight years. Gilbert needs to find a way to preserve this area from vacancy spreading in retail. This change will help the business, the businesses that are currently in place. From Ridge Wolfberg, Gilbert resident. I believe that property rights are a fundamental right. Telling a property owner that they can't build something when they have been losing money and have vacant property is not right. Please support and vote yes for Agenda Item 32, the Gilbert Commons Project. Thank you. From London Santana, Gilbert resident. Gilbert is a beautiful community, and we don't want to have vacant properties sitting for years bringing down the businesses in the area. Please support PB Bell's and SkyWest in their request to redevelop the retail that has been sitting vacant for eight years. I believe that property rights are a fundamental right. Telling a property owner that they cannot build something when they have been losing money and have vacant property is not right. Please support and vote yes for Item, Agenda Item 32, the Gilbert Commons Project. My family shops at the Kohl's on Cooper and Baseline and used to shop at the Sports Authority before they went out of business. Retail is changing, and the owners of the Gilbert Commons property should be able to adapt to those changes. Please vote yes on the Gilbert Commons changes to preserve the retail space on Baseline and keep this area from sitting vacant. Please vote yes on Agenda Item 32. Not everyone in Gilbert wants to live in a single-family home for 30 years. Many younger workers in Gilbert and Chandler want to live close to work and restaurants in downtown Gilbert. Please vote yes on Gilbert Commons zoning case. The retail center has shut down along Cooper. The area has been vacant for eight years. Gilbert needs to find a way to preserve this area from vacancy spreading in retail. This change will help the businesses that are currently in place. Please vote yes on the Gilbert Commons Project. We need to listen to the free market and stop telling business owners and property owners what they can do with their business and property. This project is not part of the neighborhood and has been approved by all of the businesses that share the retail center. From Emily Tenney, Gilbert resident. Please vote yes on the Gilbert Commons Project. We need to listen to free market and stop telling business owners and property owners what they can do with their property and businesses. This project is not part of the neighborhood and has been approved by all of the businesses that share the retail center.
So we had the same comment from a couple of people. Gilbert is a beautiful community, and we don't want to have vacant properties sitting for years bringing down the businesses in the area. Please support PB Bell's and SkyWest in their request to redevelop the retail that has been sitting vacant for eight years. And we received that from James Rogers, town resident, Gilbert resident, Dana Rogers, Cole Santana, and Jame Rogers again. Gilbert is a, oh, we had, this is from Aiden Santana, and Leslie Santana sent the same message as well. Gilbert is a beautiful community, and we don't want to have vacant properties sitting for years bringing down the businesses in the area. Please support PB Bell's and SkyWest in their request to redevelop the retail that has been sitting vacant for eight years. I believe that property rights are a fundamental right. Telling a property owner that they can't build something when they have been losing money and have vacant property is not right. Please support and vote yes for Agenda Item 32, the Gilbert Commons Project. My family shops at the Kohl's on Cooper and Baseline and used to shop at the Sports Authority before they went out of business. Retail is changing, and the owners of the Gilbert Commons property should be able to adapt to those changes. Please vote yes on the Gilbert Commons changes to preserve the retail space on Baseline and keep this area from sitting vacant. Please vote yes on Agenda Item 32. Not everyone in Gilbert wants to live in a single-family home for 30-plus years. Many younger workers in Gilbert and Chandler want to live close to work and restaurants in downtown Gilbert. Please vote yes on Gilbert Commons zoning case. The retail center has shut down along Cooper. The area has been vacant for eight years. Gilbert needs to find a way to preserve this area from vacancy spreading in retail. This change will help the businesses that are currently in place. Please vote yes on the Gilbert Commons Project. We need to listen to the free market and stop telling business owners and property owners what they can do with their property and businesses. This project is not part of a neighborhood and has been approved by all of the businesses that share the retail center.
From Jerry McBee, who does not state his residence. Gilbert resident. Madam Mayor Jen Daniels and council members, respectfully request that Item, Agenda Item 32 be delayed because of COVID-19 virus. We would be safe to say most of those affected within this zoning area of Gilbert are not focusing on these two zoning cases because of this current health issues caused by COVID-19. I respectfully request Agenda Item 32 on this current council meeting agenda be pulled and rescheduled for hearing in 60 to 90 days, or at which, that time, hopefully, this public health crisis will be settled. The original concept plan, I was not overly fond of, but this may become a way of reusing old dead shopping centers and malls. I recommend we slow down and take a harder look at the positive and negative side of this zoning after all. It would be set at our front, front door or gateway into Gilbert. Just my two cents, I was the driving force in getting the corner of Gilbert redeveloped. If I remember correctly, Scott Anderson was on the end of some of the flak back then. Respectfully, Jerry McBee. From Laurel Coughlin. Gilbert resident? I don't see that it states that, sorry. I'm a resident of Stonehenge, the housing development that is directly across the street from the proposed project. I just wanted to let you know that my husband and I are against this plan. I attended the first meeting that was held several weeks ago and was surprised that even with the recommendation of your own city planner, people that said they were not in favor of this and it was not the right project for this area was passed anyway. I feel that the owners of the shopping center are looking for an easy way out of their dilemma. Just take the quick drive-by of the shopping center, and you will see marquee signs with nothing on them. They have a bigger box stores listed, but nothing for the other stores in the center. Laurel and Bruce Coughlin, Stonehenge residents. Tammy Rogers, Gilbert resident. I wish to have this included in the meeting. Please vote yes on Gilbert Commons zoning case. The retail center has shut down along Cooper. The area has been vacant for eight years. Gilbert needs to find a way to preserve this area from vacancy spreading in retail. This change will help the businesses that are currently in place. From Greg Lane, Gilbert resident. Good evening, my name is Greg Lane, and I've been involved in commercial real estate since 1981, starting at CBRE and starting my own company, Phoenix Commercial Advisors with Dan Gardner in 1996. Our firm represents approximately 100 national and retail, and regional retailers from Starbucks to Costco in size. We also list and lease approximately 19 million square feet in Arizona. We have had the listing of Gilbert Commons for approximately three years. We also represented Kohl's, Staples, and TJ Maxx, Home Goods Combo Store, along with the closed Sports Authority and the original development of the center. We have marketed this property hard, not only locally through personal contacts and the brokerage community, but also making sour national network and chain link networks aware of this issue. Between companies who have gone out of business, such as Forever 21, Dress Barn, Toys R Us, et cetera, and use restrictions on the center allowed by the original center developer, such as no health clubs or entertainment uses allowed in the vacant TSA have drastically impacted the ability to lease the center. That doesn't even touch the fact of the existing retail within a three-mile. Most retailers are now spacing at least five miles between stores at a minimum radius. Every grocery chain is in place, plus almost every junior-box retailer with a Phoenix MSA store. I could go on and on about how the COVID-19 situation is affecting retail. The scary part is, it's a national discussion that coming out of it, we could see even fewer retailers with the capability to do new locations. The stretch of retail fronting Cooper would remain vacant for years. I would be happy to discuss this in greater detail. Please contact me at, as our office is closed and I'm working from home. I hope all of you and your families are in good health. All my best, Greg Lane, Principal, Phoenix Commercial Advisors.
Don Wade, Gilbert resident. Many of the concerns you hear voiced tonight will be from Gilbert residents in a grassroots efforts to protect what we believe to be an important part of the northwest corridor growth area, the commercial retail zone parcel at Cooper and Merrill. We do not have a seasoned, high-powered, high-paid attorney representing us. Mr. Pugh, the applicant's attorney, has many years of experience bringing these zoning cases to you and town councils of the past. He knows how to communicate with you ahead of time, how to frame his project in the most positive light possible, and how to use legal puffery to make you believe. If his project is not approved, it will be the worst possible thing for the future of the town of Gilbert. He will have you believe that his clients, SiWest and PB Bell, big companies from outside of Arizona that have no vested interest in our community other than to profit from their business ventures, want to contribute this project to the growth area to ensure vitality. We respectfully disagree with this position, and you will hear why. In fact, we believe it is a mistake. We speak tonight as Gilbert residents, some leaving here several years to those who have been here 25 years and more. Residents who will be here through boom days and recessions. We are those who have purchased homes in this area depending on the current zoning, infrastructure, and commercial retail support systems to keep our corner of Gilbert vital and thriving. Those who most likely voted for some of you and who have voted for council members to come, those who have participated in voicing opinions during the Gilbert 2020 General Plan process. We love Gilbert, we raise families here, shop, eat, recreate here. We elected you to be innovative yet fiscally responsible as you move our town forward.
You've done this with projects such as the Heritage District, San Tan, New Parks, Cactus Yards, and a 2020 general plan that will guide Gilbert's future. We thank you for the work you've done. Tonight, we ask that you give us the same respect as this highly-paid attorney and companies with money to spend. We ask that you look at this through the eyes of the Gilbert residents who are counting on you to ensure we have a strong economic base to meet the future needs of the town's budget, to preserve the commercial retail space needed to support the current and future numbers of employees in the Northwest Corridor you hope to bring in, and residents who prefer to shop and eat near work and home in Gilbert. Tonight, we share with you our concerns. We hope to show you that this is not the right project at the right location at the right time. We ask that you vote to deny the PB Bell apartment complex proposal and the rezoning of 8.6 acres from commercial retail to multifamily. Thank you for your continued commitment to what's best for Gilbert. George King, Gilbert resident. We appreciate the call you made for community input throughout the process of developing the Gilbert 2020 Plan. In a like-minded way, in order to provide authentic input with integrity, a survey through the online web service Survey Monkey was used to gather the opinions of interested residents. A link to the site was distributed via email, flyers, and word of mouth. The survey was created to accept responses for one person, one survey. Each respondent was asked to provide their name. The tool was used in place of a pen and paper petition in order to provide more input. It coincidentally provided a safer alternative in the wake of COVID-19. Survey answers allowed respondents to participate whether opposed to or in favor of the project to allow for an objective snapshot of public opinion. More information regarding the survey is available at your request. Amy Timms has the survey and reports, survey highlights. To date, 175 participants, 160 opposed, 15 in favor. 91.43% opposed the project. 79% prefer new businesses, restaurants, shopping, and entertainment options to go into the existing mall area. 62% believe this parcel should reflect our vital inviting progressive Gilbert community, and this apartment complex does not do that. 59% are concerned that the apartment complex may be sold at some point and that new ownership may not maintain the high standards PB Bell says they represent. 76% worry about property value loss. 63% are concerned about the impact on schools.
I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm going to interrupt for just a second. I feel like that one has gone on more than 33 minutes and...
It started a new one. So we had Don Wade gave his, and then we started on George King.
Okay, I apologize. Continue where you were.
Attendees at required neighborhood meetings voice concerned as offer suggestions for potential businesses for the existing retail space. During the planning commission meetings, we offered to work cooperatively with mall ownership through a working group format that might include representatives from existing complex tenants to explore ways to creatively fill vacant space. They have not expressed an interest to do so. Efforts by town officials to solicit input from residents during the Gilbert 2020 plan process reported the following. Community workshop comments. Limit the number of apartments and housing. No more housing. We need businesses, restaurants, shopping, and more office space. Online survey comments as reported in the Gilbert 2020 Plan. Which of the following attributes are most important for future housing in Gilbert? 11% said rentals. What type of development should the town encourage over the next 20 years to accommodate projected population growth? 55% respondents identified job-creating users as the most important responses reported a low level of interest in multifamily development. What attributes are the most important for future housing in Gilbert? Rental options are not mentioned. 47% identified vibrant and dynamic businesses as needing more attention. The online survey posted on the town website requesting input for the Northwest Corridor growth area just closed on March 20th. To our knowledge, information from this survey is not yet available. This begs the question, does the council want to approve a zoning and multifamily project when the public opinion from surveys on planning for this area has not yet been considered? Please deny this project. William Gray, Gilbert resident. I'm opposed to this apartment project for the following reasons, as well as others stated here tonight. Why put apartments here? It was stated at the planning meeting on March 4th that the town of Gilbert has about 3% multifamily living units. I have no reason to doubt that number, but it does represent the entirety of our great town of Gilbert. If we focus more directly on the two-mile distance from the site of Cooper and Merrill, that number is not representative of the area it will impact. Using the two-mile distance on Google Maps and making phone calls to each apartment complex, I was able to research that there are 19 apartment complexes and over 3,200 individual apartment units within this two-mile distance. The names of the complex can be referenced below. Of these 19 apartment complexes, 15 are less than one and a half miles from the PB Bell complex, and seven apartment complexes are within a mile. This represents the competition will face, the project will face. I'm sure the project's attorney, Mr. Pugh, will note that some of the companies are in Mesa, but his proposed apartment complex is literally on the Mesa and Gilbert City line at Baseline. The closest apartments, Indio Springs, are less than a mile away. It is important to review the statement Amy Timms made during her presentation at the planning meeting. She stated, "This is not the right time and not the right spot, and it will not be special. It will be just dropping a multifamily complex into that location." To further illustrate Amy's point, I researched further comparing this project's numbers and numbers from similarly sized apartment complexes, the Trails at Harris, a mile away. This project proposes putting in 205 apartment units, and the Trails currently has 209 apartment units. They are close in individual apartment size, but the Trail sits on 9.94 acres with 13 separate buildings, while this project will put on 8.64 acres with seven buildings. The bulk of the units will be in three buildings more closely resembling a motel. It is important to note that the builder is proposing a three-story complex. Only one of the other 19 in close proximity is three stories. This project is on almost 15% less land than the Trails at Harris. In comparison, there's, excuse me, there's a stark difference in the space between buildings and the privacy of the settings. Is it there a location that accommodates this project and keep it two stories, more space? Is there a location that doesn't require demolition of existing retail space? Have any town council members visited the site and the land behind it? It will be an unpleasant setting of view. Apartment complexes are Cambria, Seelow, and Gilbert, Country Villa, Craft Desert Mirage, District Loss, Epperny, Gilbert Greens, Heritage Point, Indigo Springs, Olive East, Park Meadows, Pebble Creek, Sage, The Sterling, The Maddox, Trails at Heritage, Vantage Point, and 544
Diane Wade, Gilbert resident. Vote no to rezoning. To complement the presentation that began with the question, "Why put apartments here?", let's go back to the Gilbert housing percentages provided previously. 3% for multifamily and 68% for the individual family units. If we then extrapolate the 3,200 apartment figure, within a two-mile distance from the project, we would get over 70,000 homes in the same two-mile distance. There are not 70,000 homes in this area, which speaks to the density of apartments from the 60 to Guadalupe and Cooper to Gilbert. To further illustrate, Stonehenge subdivision directly across Cooper has 192 homes. This apartment complex is proposing 205 individual units. Why put apartments here? Are they needed? The proposed complex would offer 60% studio and one-bedroom apartments, 34% two-bedrooms, and 6% three-bedrooms, just under the high-density category. The concern is that, as proposed, this could be a high-turnover, low-rent project that is not unique and in any way when compared to the other 19 complexes. However, it is being marketed at a rent range of 1,100 to 1,850, again not unique, all while suggesting that this is the project that will provide enough new residents to save the existing mall space. While the Northwest Growth Corridor study suggested multifamily may be helpful in this area, this project is on the boundary of the corridor. We have to ask, would it be better placed in the heart of the corridor to meet the needs of employees working in the industrial area? We ask, how will this project benefit the town of Gilbert? Is there another location for the project that better serves the town without the demolition of valuable commercial retail space? Why do this project now? The summary of an article titled "The Impact of New Recession on the Multifamily Market", written September 12, 2019, appeared in the Real Estate Advisors Company. It stated, "Although the impact of the next recession on multifamily is likely to be moderate, it's obviously still important to understand the potential influences and to plan for the possibility of a period of slower rent growth and the possible lower occupancies between now and 2021." It is possible we are looking at a pending situation worse than moderate recession. What impact does that have on our financing and where construction was started and then abruptly halted, leaving skeletons of buildings that stood that way for years? An example is the building at Val Vista in Williamsfield, left half-built. Is this the time to rezone valuable commercial retail space that the town won't get back once rezoned in exchange for a potentially risky apartment complex during a time of financial challenges in our country? Please vote no to rezoning this parcel. Apartments are not the right project for this location, and it's not the right time for this risky decision. Please deny this project.
Lisa, thank you so much. I know this is a lot for Lisa and Judy.
Hope we never talk.
Yeah, I'm sitting, I'm going to give them a quick little break. I think we need to find a better way, council, so I'm going to challenge us to find another way after tonight. But thank you to all of those who submitted.
Thank you.
This just frankly isn't fair to town staff, and I don't think we have this sort of hazard pay for them, so.
Okay. We'll get through it. We're almost done. Okay. Janet King, Gilbert resident. Residents of Gilbert are given the opportunity to voice their opinions on the proposal for apartments at Gilbert Commons. We ask that this be denied based on the fact that the applicant has not provided information based on a thorough and complete traffic study. Responses submitted on the recent survey made available to Gilbert residents indicated traffic was a concern for 91.43% of the participants. While increased traffic is and will continue to be a concern, at the current time, there is no hard data to substantiate the specific elements to address without conducting a thorough traffic survey. The applicant has provided the increased number of trips that would occur with the apartment complex and the increase that will occur if the retail site were at full capacity. Traffic patterns will change when you have residents going to work as compared to retail traffic spread throughout the day. How might traffic be impacted during peak hours, particularly in the mornings on neighborhood streets, school routes, and past bus stops? Will an increase in traffic at this time potentially put children and families at risk? A traffic survey could slow the current volume of the traffic. Cooper is now four lanes with, according to the town of Gilbert's plan, expansion not to be considered into the year 2030. Is expansion even possible? Merrill Avenue is designated as an exit driveway out of the apartment complex. Mr. Pugh himself at the planning commission meeting suggested a traffic survey is needed on the light at Merrill and Cooper. He acknowledged the light is forever. I have timed the light and it requires one minute and 17 seconds wait for residents leaving Stonehenge with only seven seconds to allow entrance into Cooper. This will create a potentially dangerous situation on the opposite side of the intersection as apartment residents leave the complex via Merrill during peak hours. While weren't recommendations for this intersection included in the traffic study provided by the applicant? Furthermore, Amy can speak to concerns regarding how driveways line up on Hancock. I have lived on Merrill since 1998 and have adjusted to traffic patterns as they changed when Cooper was wide to accommodate the increases in traffic as edgy prize grew from a grade school to a high school. More information is needed regarding how the proposed apartment complex will impact traffic. This is not just a not-in-my-backyard issue. The traffic flow during peak hours will impact many Gilbert residents from various areas of town who use Cooper to and from work. Mr. Pugh's stance that they can study this later is becoming a pattern. Areas of due diligence are being pushed to the design and review process and a traffic study needed later. Why didn't they go through a study session? They've had two years and are still deferring to later. Please deny this project. More information is needed before taking the major step to rezone this land from commercial retail to multifamily. Thank you. Jerry Barrymore, Gilbert resident. While Mr. Pugh is doing his best to convince you that this project is needed to revitalize a dying strip mall, we suggest that rezoning this 8.6-acre parcel and allowing for multifamily unit would be a mistake for the following reasons. City planners who have studied the project for approximately two years recommended denial. The Gilbert Chamber of Commerce opposes the project. There is significant community opposition. Should the strip mall building be left in place and vacant areas filled, the mall would provide more revenue for the town of Gilbert in the form of taxes and employment than would the apartment complex at a 200-to-1 ratio. In short, the apartment complex will provide less revenue for the town of Gilbert to help support budgetary needs for the future. Is this project really what's best for Gilbert residents? Should the mall area be demolished, there will not be opportunities to increase dining, shopping, and entertainment options for the neighborhood families or for those who travel along Cooper or who work in the area. This makes it likely that Gilbert residents will continue to spend money across Baseline in Mesa to eat, shop, et cetera. Again, the result is a loss of revenue for Gilbert's future. Because representatives from the city planning office did not believe the initial complex proposal was the right project at the right location at the right time, they recommended changes in hope that the mall ownership would make changes to better complement Gilbert's long-range strategic plan. Only safety-related changes were made. The applicant also elected not to participate in a study session. By Mr. Pugh's own admission, at the planning commission meeting, they weren't ready. They thought they could make modifications during the design and review process. After two years, why weren't they ready? Can we depend on the developer mall ownership to make changes to their plan after they've been given near-full latitude once zoning is changed in their favor? Amy's report provides red flags. The proposal lacks the design elements needed to realize the mixed-use vision of the general plan. With a detailed development plan, there is little room for site plan modifications during the design review process, mainly only landscaping colors, et cetera. This multifamily design has little or no relationship to the surroundings and doesn't address the possibilities for the future. Why would the council approve a project that does not complement and support the core values of the strategic plan they developed, especially when it brings less revenue for the town's future? Why would you approve a plan with an applicant that for two years has made no effort to modify the project to meet the needs and vision of our town? All evidence suggests that this is not the right project for this location at this time. The red flags are there. We ask that you make the fiscally responsible decision. Listen to your town experts, Chamber of Commerce, and Gilbert residents, and vote to deny this
From Laurie Gray, Gilbert resident. Thank you for allowing us to voice our opinions tonight and for the important work you do. You may hear in comments tonight the word "we." That's because many Gilbert residents think in terms of "we." This is not in our backyard issue. This is a town of Gilbert issue. It is about how you, our town council, will make a precedent-setting decision tonight about how the town deals with strip mall and commercial retail property owners who may be reeling from the impacts of e-commerce, the loss of the big-box store and the need to reinvent their retail space to make their financial targets. While we understand the position mall ownership has put themselves in, making a big purchase at a risky time in our nation's financial history, getting locked into restrictive lease agreements and covenants, however, it is the town's responsibility to sacrifice 90,000 square feet of retail space because they have, by their unsubstantiated claim, been able to lease over the past eight years. We believe it is not. It is not unusual as tenants, excuse me, move to go bankrupt, that they are still responsible for the life of the lease. A prime example is the Henrys located south of this site. When they closed, five years remained on their lease. It did not create a financial burden for the property owner, so the building sat for five years until ownership needed to act. With this in mind and with the precedent this project will set, will other mall owners request zoning changes and demolish perfectly sound infrastructure to make changes on their property due to hardship? Will they, as this group is doing, reference the alternative as having a decaying shell of a mall that, in Mr. Pugh's words, "is no good to anyone"? As we understand it, Gilbert can't afford to continue to lose CR space as the revenue will be necessary as we get closer to build-out. What will be the potential loss of revenue for the town over time if this project is approved? We are in uncharted territory. No one knows how No one knows how COVID-19 will impact our nation's workforce and the stability of our economy. The Northwest Growth Corridor Master Plan is still currently in the works with finalization not scheduled until May 1st through June 30th. It is the view of 91.43% of survey respondents that logic dictates you deny this project in an effort to protect the flexibility and innovative actions that may be needed to meet Gilbert's future needs. The applicant may argue their project will create jobs. For how long will the project be seen through to fruition or be abandoned half-built? In any case, the jobs will be temporary. Decisions today must be calculated so as to not jeopardize the financial future of Gilbert. It is not the right time to sacrifice valuable retail space. We urge you to act with caution during this tumultuous time. Fiscal responsibility calls for a vote to deny this project.
That concludes our portion. Thank you, Lisa and Judy. Patrick, you got to do something nice for them. All right, we have a couple people on the phone. We've done 45 minutes thus far of public comment. We still have a substantial amount to go. So I'm going to need everyone to hang tight. I've already gotten a couple emails from people who are upset that they're having to sit through public comment. Unfortunately, this is the public process. This is how it works, and we value the voices of our residents. So I apologize to the individuals who feel burdened by this, but this is the public process. The good news is you can do it in your pajamas and not at Town Hall. So there's like silver lining and everything. All right, we have two people on the phone or multiple people on the phone. We'll start with Patricia Pettrudi. Patricia, we're going to unmute your phone, and if you'll state your name and your city of residence. Patricia, we'll need you to unmute your phone as well. Oh, I think I hear you, Patricia? Okay, Patricia, we'll have to see if we can come back to you. Eric, are you seeing, is Patricia, her lines open? Okay, Patricia, are you available? Okay, Christie DeBorit? Christie DeBorit?
They keep on meeting people, and they don't know they're on meeting.
No, every day, every night I come out.
Christie, are you available?
I take care when I go to bed.
Okay, we'll close the line for Christie and go back to Patricia. Caller number 41. Sorry, what was that, Valerie? Okay, everyone is currently unmuted. That means that we can hear all of your side conversations on all the speakers. So if Patricia or Christie is on the phone and wishes to speak, now would be the time. Okay, we will close the lines. Thank you. All right, we kind of say that if you're not having fun, you're doing it wrong in Gilbert. So we're going to have a little bit of fun and try harder. We do need to open up the public lines for anyone else besides Patricia or Christie who wishes to speak tonight. So we'll go ahead and open those public lines again. And if anybody does wish to speak that hasn't already had their statement read.
I would, I'd like to speak.
Okay, we're going to identify which caller you are. Valerie, are you able to see who that is? So for the individual who wishes to speak, can you please state your name and your city of residence?
Debbie Cunningham, Gilbert.
All right, will the individual who wishes to speak please state your name and your city of residence? You were breaking up a little earlier.
Debbie Cunningham, Gilbert.
Terrific. Thank you, Debbie. We can hear you loud and clear.
Good.
The time is yours.
Thank you. I would like to give my opposition to the multifamily homes or multifamily housing that's going to be developed, the proposal. It's, we're being basically asked to save the owner who bought the center in 2012 at the time when it was vacant, because they're claiming it's been vacant for eight years. We're being asked to save the owner who allowed restrictive deeds prohibiting from leasing to a wide variety of tenants. But somehow we're able to convince the tenants to remove the prohibition of multifamily housing. The center on the northeast corner of Baseline and Cooper has reinvented itself and brings in lots of business for shops and eating. And this is in Mesa. So we're all really tempted to go up to Mesa and spend our money there. We should expect a development proposal that reinvents this property because this is part of the northwest corridor that should meet our expectations of keeping Gilbert a great place to live. So bringing in multifamily doesn't do anything for the community. We need to have more retail and more creativity in the development of this area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Debbie. All right, we're going to unmute the public line again. If anybody wished to speak that's on the public line? Okay, we're going to close the public line before somebody says something that they regret. Thank you. All right, at this time, let's go to the applicant. I believe we have the applicant on the phone. Is it Ralph Pugh that's?
There you go, you're on. Good evening, mayor. This is Ralph Pugh. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you, Ralph.
Oh, thank you very much, mayor and council. You've been very patient tonight and working your way through a unique situation. I have some thoughts to share. We won't do the entire presentation that we did at Planning Commission, but I just want to say first of all, thank you for meeting under these unique circumstances. I was talking to others around our office today, and when this business of my practice began in the late '70s, I could never have imagined a meeting like this today. Absolutely impossible. So the thoughts we have are the following. First of all, mayor and council members, thank you to all the input from the citizens and their interest in this project. The reason this case is being brought forward to you tonight is because it is in an effort to sustain and support the existing retail uses that are on Baseline. This project will revitalize that. It will help those be long-term sustainable and will be successful. The other thing I'd like to mention is the Planning Commission spent a lot of time listening to both the neighbors, the citizens of Gilbert, and the planning staff. They spent time listening to us as the applicant. They've heard all of the arguments that have been mentioned here tonight. And in their deliberative process, they even took into account and were aware of what the chamber's issues were. And they voted on a five-to-two vote to recommend approval of this case. And I would like to save all of you a significant amount of time tonight by simply saying they did their job, they studied the issues, they analyzed things thoroughly, and give that recommendation to you tonight. There are a couple of items I'd just like to focus on briefly. One is that a comment came early in the public process from my friend and colleague, Phil Long, former council member. He mentioned two things that were very interesting, Ron. If you approve this case, it will result in a reduction in revenue to the town, and it will not promote the shop Gilbert standards that you want. Frankly, exactly the opposite is true, council members. The approval of this case will indeed bring revenue to this location because for the last eight years, there has been zero sales tax here. The other thought that comes to our mind is that when you think about some of the comments from the commissioners in approving this case, let me just share some of those with you. They were excited that there was, quote, "a ton of money being invested in the area." They recognized that multifamily is traditionally a buffer between industrial and single-family residential. The project looked good. The elevations were great. And one of them mentioned that, hey, if he even lived in this neighborhood, he would much prefer a new multifamily project to the existing vacant buildings. So the other thing is, the plan is consistent with many of your town policies. I don't want to bore you with every chapter and verse in the general plan. And there's been some question about the Northwest Growth Area Plan, council members. We realize that plan has not been fully adopted. But as it emerges and from the initial comments, clearly the pattern is, we need life, we need vitality, we need energy in this area of town, and what will bring it and start it and get it to begin in this area is this new first-class, high-quality, multifamily development. You all know why retail is suffering as much as it is. You know how e-commerce has taken over. You know especially, construction starts throughout the valley, and commercial uses have gone significantly down over the last decade. And now, under the circumstances we're in today, it's very likely that the virus and its effects on society will even have a further dampening on commercial uses. And I hate to disagree with those who say that we need more retail up in this area. Frankly, in a five-mile radius from here, council members, there's over 26 million square feet of retail uses. 81 buildings that are 10,000 square feet or larger in that area are vacant. And that pattern will continue if we don't do something about it here. So we urge your support of this request. And we do recognize that the staff would like to have seen and would recommend like a perfectly integrated, ideal mixed-use project here. Well, we all would like perfect in land planning, but perfect doesn't exist. And this site is doing the best it can to integrate commercial with high-density residential and understanding that this area does not have any multimodal transportation available, much of it. It doesn't have a wow factor entertainment area, and it doesn't have significant high-density residential, which are key components, frankly, to a successful project. The traffic is less from what we're producing. The parking is covered in our plan. And I'd be happy, mayor and council members, to answer any specific questions you have. Our opinion is, it's time for this property owner, after eight years, to have a fair and reasonable use of its property in these difficult and changing times. Thank you, mayor. Be happy to address thoughts or questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions that the council has for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm going to thank you in advance for indulging me. I'm a little late to the game here, so I'm going to talk probably a little longer than I normally would. I echo the element of emotion that's lost by this not being a public hearing. And so I'm going to try and do my best to capture a little bit. One week ago, I sat and stood in front of this council and in front of the people, and I talked about what were the current financial policies and tax structure in Gilbert? What recommendations would I make? I talked about long-term and short-term financial health and creating the destination experience for Gilbert as far as the parks, shopping, and downtown district. One of the things I specifically talked about was strategic zoning in areas bordering adjacent municipalities, strategic business development in areas supporting Queen Creek, Higley, and Santan, and becoming the shopping destination, while as there are a lot of people that live in Gilbert and running their business in adjacent cities and a desire to be bringing these people back. Just as I read you this, I believe that is in part why I was appointed to this seat. And speaking to thousands of residents during my time that I've been campaigning, they feel the same. Can you tell me how giving up a piece of vital commercial property that's, that I believe is critical to our long-term prosperity in exchange for your proposal was in the best interest of the Town of Gilbert?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Spence, and welcome to the council. Through the mayor, I would answer your question as follows. The town is not giving up acreage or buildings that are retail. That retail exists because a private party invested its income and assets and capital at great risk and chose to build that building. And it worked for a while, but it got caught up in the plethora of commercial in the area. And the reason this will help Gilbert is because if, if we don't, I mean, imagine, the thing that the Sidewest people could do is just fence this off and leave it that way for X number of years more. What good does that do for the town? So our view of it is the multifamily will insert individuals with disposable income in an area that needs more money to be spent in it at the retail center. And that's how it will help the town. It has proven not to be successful. The major tenants in this area abandoned it. They wouldn't even accept serious rent concessions. And in one instance, Whole Foods, for example, after Henry's left, decided not even to go here. So there's lots of issues that impact this. Town's much better off with a good use at this location than having it fenced off and vacant for years to come.
All right, thank you for your answer. And I wanted to kind of follow along here. Just for the information of the people who are listening, I grew up about 10 miles from here. And I'm looking at an article from Gilbert Sun News dated March 15th. One of the statements in here is, I have no other property like this. I have been doing this for over 20 years. And it's discussing the difficulty in trying to lease out, lease out this space. In my 52 years, I've never seen an apartment complex stimulate commercial growth. In fact, I've seen the exact opposite. And I would be willing to show you several examples around the Phoenix metropolitan area where that's true. One of the reasons I retired, I decided to retire in Gilbert, instead of Tempe, my hometown, was due to decisions like this. When I talked with my friends about where should I live when I came back home after serving, everyone said they went to Gilbert. Quite honestly, Tempe had changed while I was gone for 24 years of naval service. I have witnessed the 100-year flood that came several years in a row, wiped out nearly every bridge in, between Tempe and Scottsdale. I waited in 100-degree heat with my mom going through the gas, for gas during the economic crisis of the '70s. Every decade in our town's history or in our valley's history has given us our fair share of economic challenges. If our solution to economic downturns were to rezone and put up apartments, every vibrant business area in the valley would be nothing but high-density housing. So you had a quote, and I'm just a moment ago, where it says, "This pattern will continue if we don't do something." So let's say that we approve this request, and our current economic situation results in Kohl, Staples, and Old Navy choosing, closing its doors. What assurances are you giving to us today that you will not be in front of us in six months to a year asking to build another 500 units in place of these buildings?
Mayor, Councilmember Spence, that is a very, very good question. And in the real estate development world, assurances and guarantees of those types are difficult to come by. None of us can predict what may happen. I can tell you- I can tell you this much: It is certainly not the business of Si West to demolish shopping centers that are functioning and do something else. They are in the retail rental business, and that's what they intend to do. Could something catastrophic happen? Of course it could, but that is not where this project is headed, and I think that, I don't think it would be a fair comparison to say that that's a possibility. That's not in our intent, and that's not where we would take this project at all.
I'd like to move on to a discussion about rights of property owners. And this is the rhetorical question. When you buy a house as part of an HOA, you agree to terms as the CC&Rs, and you're restricted, for instance, to a paint palette. That instance, you agreed to the terms, while you purchased your house, it would therefore prevent you from painting your house purple, for instance. Not necessarily a violation of the rights of property owners. Question is, was this property zoned for commercial when you purchased it?
Again, Mayor, Councilmember Spence, the answer to that is yes, it was, and the buildings were already built.
Have you been allowed to operate your business as you deem necessary in accordance with the terms of your purchase and zoning laws?
Mayor, Councilmember Spence, we have been allowed to operate that business according to the regional commercial zoning that's there. That's true.
You had said, "None of us can predict what may happen down the road." One of the things that I say a lot when I'm talking with constituents is, "Why not Gilbert?" I ask executives where they live. They say that they live in Chandler, they live in Scottsdale, some say they live in Gilbert. Those that don't do business or live in Gilbert, I ask, "Why not Gilbert?" I think it's a very simple litmus test to determine if there is a function that we are not providing within the town, and it allows for me to make recommendations to try and provide those services. When I talk with the constituents, one of the reasons when I ask why you don't do business, and I'm going to say all but one, and that one is the body damage, the body repair place next to the Bondraut School of Driving, which I think is probably a pretty sound business location, but every single person tells me that it's too expensive. I've actually had people that looked in that area, with the industrial and with the commercial, trying to find office spaces, and they say it's too expensive, and so I'm confused. Now, Deloitte came through, and again, part of my interview process last week, we talked about why did a Fortune 100 company choose Gilbert, and it was about accessibility, which we have the 60, which is very close to us. Diversity and inclusion, proximity to educational resources, all very much part of that district. The vast talent of people that we have, which we have in that district. And then he said, "It's all wrapped up in a town where you can live and raise a family," which is currently what we have in that district. I was very clear when I talked about, if we're good enough today with these attributes to bring in companies like Deloitte, why wouldn't we be able to provide these same attributes and get something like this company in 20 years? So, when you talk about none of us can predict, 100 years ago, we wouldn't have predicted that we would have been the hay capital of the world. Forty years ago, when Billy Spence, down in Tempe, was riding the bus for softball games in this area, would have never guessed that a town of just over 5,000 would have exceeded 260,000. Five years ago, we wouldn't have predicted companies like Deloitte and Northrop Grumman would have established such a presence in Gilbert. So, I have to ask, what will we look like in the next five to 10 years? Bear with me here, and I appreciate the time. I picked up lunch from one of our businesses in the Heritage District today, and talked with the owner, who, like many of our businesses throughout Gilbert, are concerned and trying to figure out what happens to us next. They're doing everything they can to survive, and the innovation that we have seen throughout the businesses in Gilbert. They are offering discounts, they are opening up drive-through services, they are doing delivery that they've never done before. Bottom line is, when necessity to survive becomes a factor, find ways to survive. They're supporting us at a great expense, and I think we need to support them. So, in closing here, I'd like to point this out and ask for the rest of my council members: I can think of no greater admission of defeat. Rezone our most precious resources. Our commercial zoning is vital, or our commercial zoning is vital to our long-term survival. Our belief that we will recover from the present situation is demonstrated by standing side by side with businesses in Gilbert, and I believe we must show through leadership and policy that our town will recover from our current financial situation. Now, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I believe in Gilbert. I believe in Gilbert and what we can be in five years, in 10 years, in 20 years. I will stand by you during these difficult times, and that's my commitment to you as a business, that if you choose to continue this space, that I'll do everything in my power to help support you succeed, just like I'm going to stand by every other business in Gilbert right now that is struggling to survive. I ask that you would stand alongside with me.
Any other comments from council? Questions for the applicant? All right, we're ready for statements from council. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Ralph, thank you very much for the presentation and for summary that you gave, and to all those who took the time to give us their comments, thank you very much for participating with us tonight. Just a couple of thoughts on this. One, I know Ralph had mentioned that it has come up several times during the discussion about the study that we're doing in the Northwest Corridor, which is no small matter because we know that the Northwest Corridor is going to play a very active role in our City of the Future initiative. There's a lot of investment that we'll have to do in that area, there's a lot of consideration for what is happening there. And to that end, we did ask the Urban Land Institute to come in and look at that area, and we've asked them to do, not only give us some ideas about what may happen in that corridor, but we've actually asked for a summary study that is, was mentioned, I think, to be completed here in a couple of months. Some of the things were identified in their discussion had to do with, and it pointed out at the beginning of their recommendations, that this area was and is an industrial and commercial and business park type of environment, and one of their first questions was, "Do you want to change from that?" And so, they had several points that they included, which were market potential, planning and design, development strategies, implementation strategies, and in one section, most of what they talked about has to do with adaptive reuse, specific policies and ordinances related to infill in the area, and active, and adaptive reuse of current uses in the area, and that they did recognize there will be change in that corridor, but we don't know what that is yet. They asked the question, "Should new residential be allowed? Should we try to attract new residential?" We don't know those answers yet. That's still something that we need to look into, and some of their implementation strategies address that. Are there carrots and sticks to be used to find what is most successful in that area? Do we encourage new development or reinvestment in that area? So, I think there are a lot of questions still that remain about what the use, the ultimate use on that site might be, and I must admit, I'm a little bit perplexed also that it seems as though we haven't done as good a job as I think could be done to integrate this site with the commercial adjacent to it, that there are probably designs that would bring the two together better than they have, and we didn't get a chance to explore that very much, but I think there is some more effort that could be done with that. So, at this point, I can't say whether I would support or not support this, but I'm not in favor at this point in going forward with it without getting some other questions answered.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate the many residents who have commented, both for and against the project. Appreciate the applicant and town staff for their efforts on this and the comments from the council members thus far. Couple of comments. I used to work just down the street from this and drove by this property every day for years and years and years, and I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of the area. A couple of things. One, Si West, being the owner of this property, is a commercial real estate company who, as I understand it, buys properties like this and rents property, that's how they make money, and the most lucrative thing for them to do is to keep the property and rent it at full capacity, and they have tried for eight years to do that. So, I'm having a hard time with some of the comments of, "They're trying to sell this just to make money," and I don't know all the numbers to it, but I would suspect that they probably, I'm confident they're going to lose money on this sale based on what they paid for it originally and all the money that they sunk into it over the last eight years, whether it be taxes, whether it be any other costs to do it. So, I don't look at this as, they bought this hoping it would not work, so they could sell it to become an apartment complex. That's not their business model. To the comment about HOAs and what you agree to and what you don't agree to, I'm appreciative of Si West and looking at other options for this property, and going through the proper channels, both with the tenants, who they had to get 100% approval from all the tenants, from Kohl's all the way down to Home Goods, to do this. This is not something where they're trying to sneak it through some process. They've gone through all the process of the rules that they belong to, both within the complex and within the town, and I do appreciate them doing that. I also struggle with the idea that, or the comment that, it's in a great area for commercial to come and put stores in. Frankly, that corner has struggled for eight years. I suspect it's going to struggle a lot more in the coming months as there are so many changes happening, and with the COVID-19, I do not believe that commercial is going to get better, it's only going to get worse. And all of the big stores, many of the big stores that exist for these large corner complexes, you can find kitty corner. So, I don't think that it's believable to think that a Walmart or any of the stores that generally surround Walmarts or Targets are going to come in kitty corner to where they already exist or where their competitor exists. And so, I wish this would become 100% occupied with commercial, and I wish it would be occupied with very high-end commercial that generates tons and tons of tax dollars. That would be great, and I wish that lots of shoppers would go and keep them in business. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened over the last eight years, and so, for those reasons, I think that this will help revitalize that corner and keep it going long-term. And is it the best return on investment for tax dollars? It's not. But I think that the best return on tax dollars immediately, the amount of taxes that we'll receive, is not always the answer. There's a much bigger picture that we have to look at, and we have to keep in mind guaranteed tax dollars versus potential tax dollars, which are two very different things. And so, for those reasons, Mayor, I am in support of this project.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Let's go to Councilmember Yentes on the phone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say ditto with a lot of what Councilwoman Ray just expressed, and then would like to add in addition to that, I think we need to be somewhat careful about rhetoric we use as policymakers, specific to, there is no such thing as the town of Gilbert giving up property in these scenarios. We don't own the property. Private companies, private developers, private business owners do. So, when we make those kinds of comparisons, HOAs that obviously have private contracts, and that's a separate issue, but I do appreciate the, I guess, the difficult situation the developer is in. I think this is kind of a unique situation. They're going to have to put a tremendous amount of investment in order to make this kind of, kind of change to the property. So, to say that this is just about them making money, I think that this is going to, one, probably cost them a great deal of resources. Is it the ideal situation? No, but as we all know, markets change, markets are going to continue to change. There's no way that anybody, whether you're in the development world and you do this on a day-to-day basis, or you're a city planner, you're a policymaker, you're a neighbor, to anticipate kind of how those realities are going to change over time. And I think it's incumbent upon us to be flexible because of those changes and respond in a way that gives that flexibility to property owners in order to try to maintain on their investments. And quite frankly, when the development community makes money, so does the town of Gilbert. It's not always optimal, this is a unique situation, but as I see it right now, it's, I think, going to be a benefit to the area as a whole. I would rather see this kind of development than know, just to have it sit there vacant and, you know, see the viability of the businesses in there continue to deteriorate, and I'm at this moment supportive of the project.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you, and like Councilwoman Ray, appreciate the time that everybody's taken to comment and prepare some thoughts, and those are valuable for us to listen and contemplate. I do want to add to Councilwoman Ray's comment that, in the eight years that it sat vacant, was probably the eight strongest years of our economy in the history of our country. If they can't sustain business in that climate going forward, you know, is highly doubtful. So, do we handcuff them to this? I just don't see that that makes a lot of sense. If I think of some of the shopping centers that have struggled, what uses have dropped in there? I can think of a couple of them. There's some churches, there's charter schools, and those two entities are typically filed as nonprofits, and the town will get very, very little, if any, tax revenue off of those. So, if we look at this from an economic standpoint, that's probably what would occupy those. Another thing that might drop in is maybe a goodwill, and there's good receipts on those tills. You know, the purchases are very small, but I love goodwill, it's just like all of us do, and we support that, but that's, those are the kinds of uses that you're seeing outside of them just sitting vacant, and so, as I thought about this, is if they're not able to load this in the best economy we've ever seen and probably will ever see for a very long time, why can't we compromise here and allow some other usage? The other thing that I think we need to debunk, and I've said this before, I'm going to keep saying it, is that the chamber's opposed to this, but the chamber's basing this on very old models, right? This old template, this old thinking that, you know, square footage is a big loss. Sometimes they use these derogatory terms like downzoning, and that's just not the reality that we live in anymore. I wish they'd update their thinking on that. It's outdated, because the fact of the matter is, is the new model is online, and that's really what's killed these shopping centers. There's a structural change in the economy, and then also in 2018, there was a decision in the Supreme Court called the Wayfair Decision versus South Dakota, and that changed the game as well, right? Because that allowed states to collect sales tax. So, a multifamily property like this now allows a higher concentration of people that are going to be shopping, and so, we're never going to see, I don't believe in our day, another Santan mall or another big shopping mall, I don't see it. But the truth of the matter, the new reality, I wish the chamber would recognize this, is we carry a shopping mall in our pockets, and we use it all the time. And now with the Wayfair decision, we can collect sales tax, there's a powerful opportunity to, and I'm not... opportunity to, and I'm not for increasing taxes, as I've said earlier today, but the truth of the matter is, is this now is going to be, um, probably collecting a lot more taxes than either sitting dormant, or if it's purchased by a nonprofit, that will probably not be paying a lot of, uh, property taxes or generating any sales taxes. So from an economic standpoint, I think when we look at the new models and understand the new realities of things, I think it's important to know that, um, this is not a massive loss economically. If anything, it's going to be, um, a positive. And then just one short comment on property rights, because that's a very, very important thing, and I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Yentes on that. We should remember that people have rights. This is still America. This is still capitalism, right? This isn't China, right? It's okay if somebody comes in and makes a profit, because the point of capitalism is that somebody else benefits as well. Both parties benefit. It's voluntary. It's not a compulsory transaction. And the question I had asked the people that challenge others' property rights is, is is, are your, is your rights better than their rights, right? Who, whose right is superior here? Right? Last time I checked, all men are created equal, right? And, and our government, and job, government's job is to secure those rights. So I, I think that's very, very important. We cannot lose the value of property rights, and if somebody wants to come in and gather millions of dollars in capital and take a risk on something, um, they have every right to do that, and we should welcome them. And because of the new realities and the new economy, we actually are benefiting in very substantial ways. Um, so Mayor, thank you for the time. I am supportive of this, uh, just given those comments, and, uh, again, thank you for the time this evening.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to, I want to just note a couple of things that I haven't heard yet so far. Historically, if you look back at this property, it was multifamily to start with, and then it was changed to agricultural, and then it was changed to general commercial over the years. And I actually was on the Planning Commission when that happened back in the early 2000s. And so I, I always like to go back and look at the history of a property to see what happened with it. There were comments made on the phone tonight or in the letters that were read by our clerks about the industrial property behind it, and it is light industrial. It's very light use. Friends for Life Animal Shelter is back there. There's a mechanic back there. There are office buildings back there, so it's not a heavy intensity industrial use like some people might think when they hear the word industrial. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm sitting looking at a, a photograph of the, um, the land itself, and with all of the empty space to the rear that we're discussing this evening, there's also empty land on baseline that hasn't been developed yet. So even with the success that they've had facing baseline, they still have empty land that could potentially be developed into the future, and they have empty pads and buildings to the south of where we're discussing this evening. They've had restaurant pads go out that are on, on the Cooper side, restaurants that are generally very popular and very successful all over town, all over the valley for that matter, and they've had those go out of, out of business. And when I first heard this case, I was not a fan of adding more multifamily to, um, to the, to Gilbert. And, and I hear that a lot from our residents as I'm getting out and meeting people and talking to them, just like Councilmember Spence said, it's one of the things that they talk about the most. There are some situations where it works and it fits, and to answer the, the comments that my fellow councilmembers have said about actually bringing more revenue into the center, adding those multifamily apartments could bring over 200 people to that corner that can be shopping and having their nails done and, um, eating at the restaurants and using all of the other, other uses that happen to sit there right now. And I also agree with what Councilmember Taylor said about the face of commercial today and what is it going to look like after COVID. Before COVID, every other week, we were hearing about another major store that was shutting down and going out of business. Some of those stores are sitting here facing baseline now, and we know eventually we'll go out of business. They're, they're already planning on it. They're already shutting down stores all over the country. So when will that happen in Gilbert in that location? We don't know. But it happens all the time, and what can go in those spots? Commercial is not opening up to the level that it was way back in 2002, 2003, 2004, 2005, prior to the recession. And as Councilmember Taylor said, we've had eight great years and, um, I, I don't know why these, these stores would not be successful under these circumstances. It really goes to show how important freeway is to your community and to your city because the northeast corner that abuts the US 60 has been very popular and very successful. And here in Gilbert, we don't have the benefit of, of going up to the 60, except for at Higley. We only have our eight miles of the 202, the Loop 202. So we need to make sure that we protect that property especially, and, um, I'm going to be in favor of this item this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and for all of the councilmembers and the public who have spoken today, I will just add one, uh, maybe two quick comments. Councilmember Spence, you mentioned that multifamily hasn't ever spurred, at least to your knowledge, any, uh, commercial development. I would just argue that it has helped across the street here from Town Hall. We have Gilbert Town Square. Um, there was a large portion in that, uh, uh, retail development that was originally slated to be a Walmart. It wasn't coming in, and those, uh, units, uh, commercial units over there really have struggled over the years. And I am really pleased that once they did add some, uh, multifamily in that spot, um, you'll note that everything along the main drag there is leased up now and that they are seeing higher leases and lease rates in that, um, space and more success for those businesses that are dependent upon those residents. So I do think that's an example of when there was a shift, um, and a pivot, if you will, from the original plan or what we idealized as a strong commercial development, that there was a benefit there. I have probably voted no over the years on more multifamily than maybe anyone else, and it just means that I see things a little bit differently. Um, and I've, you know, behind the scenes, worked closely on a lot of different items to, to, to say, hey, this is a good spot, or this is not a good spot, more often than not, not a good spot, um, for multifamily. But when I look at the commercial development in that area, we will no longer get four corners of commercial in the town of Gilbert that is successful, and you see it all over town. You see it at Val Vista and Lindsay. You see it down, we're talking about it now at, uh, you know, uh, Higley and Riggs. All over town, at one point, our general plan had four corners of commercial, and that was a ideal plan 20 years ago or 15 years ago, and even at the downturn, at the start of the downturn, that was still our plan. Um, obviously, the world has shifted. We have to shift. We have to pivot. We have to make some adjustments as a council and as visionaries for the town. We do need to get creative. We do need to use all of our available resources to find new paths forward for our community. Um, and I am, I'm pleased to say, I actually think this is a great integrated use. It is a buffer between the, um, light industrial and commercial space, and it wasn't so long ago, if council can remember, a year and a half ago, that we changed from having a regional commercial conditional use permit for multifamily and removed that as an option. So this could have at one time developed as a multifamily use under a conditional use permit years ago, and it did not. And now we are going through a hard rezone in order to find out if this is what would, would, uh, would help this area. I'm, tend to agree with that. I'm excited about a new direction. I think vacant retail over, um, so many years can only detract from our community, and so I, I, I'm pleased to support a shift in this area. With all that being said, I will close the public hearing on this agenda item and entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a five-two vote. Our dissenting votes are Council, uh, Vice Mayor Anderson and Councilmember Spence. Thank you, and thanks to everyone's patience. Um, we, we did it, and high fives to our team over there at the table. That does complete our public hearing items. It moves to Agenda Item 38, our administration building about allowing homeowners to opt out of soil report requirements by the use of a waiver.
Mayor, I'll talk about it if you'd like.
Please.
So I, I appreciate, uh, Mayor and Councilwoman Peterson for signing this, uh, with me. The end goal, uh, here is we're trying to lighten the burden on residents and future residents of the town, uh, in, in building things here. And as we look at different ways to help the process, one of which that we've talked about a few times over the year are soil tests. Obviously, we have soil here, uh, that is some of the worst in the valley, uh, in Gilbert as far as movement, et cetera. Um, and so soil tests are required for new builds, which is, I, I think, appropriate. What the hope is here is we are, um, going to, my hope is that we will copy Scottsdale, which allows for residents, if they're doing any additions, remodels, et cetera, on their property, that they can continue with a soil report if they want, or they can opt out by filling out a form, um, which then allows them, does not require them to get a soils report, saving lots of time and lots of money. Um, and, and reviewing this with the town attorney and others, and, and Chris can speak to it, there's no liability on the town. Um, if, if they were to opt out and something happens, it, it doesn't hold the town liable for anything. So, uh, I think this is an important step as we continue to make things, um, easier for the residents of the town of Gilbert, and I will give, uh, immense appreciation to Kyle Maris and his team. I know he's worked on this for years and years and years, and every couple of years, it seems like there's a new process to make it a little bit easier, um, and I think we're continuing to improve, and, um, the amount of work and effort they've put into this is, is a lot. But I, I think that gives an overall, um, an overview of this, and, uh, in the packet was the sample form that they would fill out, and one page, very easy. Um, and it would also give direction to Development Services to change in their checklist items so when someone comes in, this is now an option, uh, for them to, to check off. I would love to have it approved tonight.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea. Any other comments? Terrific. We're all in favor?
It's just informational, right? There's no motion.
Correct. We can move forward.
Well, we can give, we give direction to them to start.
I like the direction.
And Kyle said, well, I shouldn't speak for Kyle, but my understanding is that if we give direction to move forward, this will begin tomorrow. People can start using this immediately. It'll be part of their process.
Terrific.
We need a vote, Chris, or can we, they got it? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 39, Boards and Commissions. We have a discussion regarding the creation of a Veterans and Military Advisory Board. We've had this on our agenda now for a couple of times, and appreciate the council, um, allowing us to at least move forward exploring this. We've had multiple stakeholders meetings. Um, two occurred, uh, February eight, one occurred February 18th and one occurred March 9th, and, uh, had lots of representation from all over the community, including Councilmember Peterson, who assisted us, and our newly appointed member, Councilmember Spence. Les Presnick, um, former council member and also co-founder of Operation Welcome Home, helped us. Um, we haven't heard that happen in a while. I don't know if you guys know this, but at 10 o'clock, the air in this room shuts off, so it gets really quiet, and I haven't heard that in like three, four years, maybe since before I was the mayor, so that means we've been here too long. All right.
Chris, and I blame you guys.
Yeah. I'm sure you do. All right, um, so lots of good, uh, conversation. You can see here, there's a draft ordinance. Um, the request from the council today is to give staff direction to bring this forward as a full ordinance to create this Veterans and Military Advisory Board for the town of Gilbert. Any questions? Councilmember Spence, do you have a question?
Comment. I have a, a press release here dated 23rd December from the Secretary of the Navy. It says, "I am honored and humbled to name the next two Virginia-class nuclear fast-tack submarines to be built as the USS Oklahoma and the USS Arizona." Quote, he continues on to say, "Truly, there are no greater honor that I can think of for the Navy Marine Corps and the nation than to build and commission into active service two state-of-the-art American warships carrying the spirit of the heroes of the greatest generation. I can think of no better town to spearhead sponsorship of this ship. I would like to bring the USS Arizona home to Gilbert. Would a formal request for sponsorship be something this committee would be able to take on?"
So that would be off agenda, because this is specific to creating the advisory board, but I would highly suggest, because I already have an idea that we know who our council liaison would be to the advisory board had it been formed, Councilmember Spence. So I would highly suggest that if and when we get this board, uh, created, you be the liaison and you spearhead that with the committee. Of course, the committee gets a say in that.
I, I guess I walked into that one.
Okay, we're happy to help. I don't think you've even had time to read Robert's Rules of Order yet, so you're just fine. We'll get you all schooled up. All right, so we need direction to staff. Any opposition to that? Can you give direction to staff? Just, okay. Direction to staff given, we'll look for an ordinance at our future council meeting. Thank you. Any boards, commission, or committee reports from the council? All right, seeing none. Um, I do want to make a, a report from Town Manager on current events. Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll try to keep this brief. Uh, I just, again, wanted to thank all the members of Dean Gilbert over the last week with the transition to the closure of the town facilities and all the great things they've done to help our community, businesses, and citizens during this period of time, um, has, has been greatly appreciated. And I wanted to remind everyone that outside of the suspension of our parks, classes, and programs and those specific facilities, all service lines continue to function, uh, here in the town, so you can still do, uh, all of your normal businesses with the town. We are doing that through a digital, online, uh, approach at this time, and you can find information, uh, there's a banner across the town's website at gilbertaz.gov, or you can go directly to the page at gilbertaz.gov/covid19. And then our digital government team has come up with a great text update, uh, tool so that you can get the latest information, uh, as we understand it and what's going on. And all you have to do to sign up for that is text "Gilbert" to 313131. Wanted to thank, uh, a number of people who worked on the 457 plan change, administrator change that you voted on tonight. It was spearheaded by Kristen Drew and Donna Pedrera and Ernestine Tessarek and Hocken Johansson, Doug Boyer, Mike Burthardt, Ray Savoy, Hondo Judd, Chris Payne, and Leah Hubbard Reinheimer. Uh, they, uh, quite a bit of work went into that, and it's been a very smooth transition over and a much better plan administrator for us going forward. And then finally, Jessica Marlowe and Paul Montez for the work on the recycling contracts and negotiations. We still have a lot of work to do there, um, but appreciate, uh, there was a lot of work that went into that process. And then lastly, as part of the review with the rating agencies for the Public Safety Bonds, all three rating agencies gave us a, confirmed a AAA rating with a stable outlook, uh, which is a great testament to, um, the fiscal responsibility of this organization and, and the state of our community in general. With that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Patrick, and I will just add that Patrick deserves a tremendous amount of gratitude from all of us on the council for the way that he has managed the entire organization in a very difficult time. So Patrick, thank you for all the teasing that I have for you. I recognize, um, really how fortunate we are to have you leading the entire team. Don't respond to that. That was a nice comment, and just leave it there. All right, report from council on current events?
I don't think there's anything to report, because there's nothing happening.
Well, things are still happening, including a Planning Commission meeting that will be happening soon.
Yes, there's a Planning Commission meeting April 1st, and it will be run in a very similar fashion as to this evening's meeting, I believe, so I think we've worked out the kinks.
We will continue to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thanks for everyone's patience, um, tonight. We really appreciate it. Please continue to visit our gilbertaz.gov/covid19 website where you can get up-to-date information on how, uh, your community is responding and ways that you can help. Um, there are a lot of nonprofits within the community that are in need of help so that they can help our neighbors and friends, and so would encourage those of you who are able and, um, have the resources to do so, to reach out to others, um, especially remembering those individuals who, uh, may be suffering during this time. So please know that your community is cheering you on and that we're all in this together. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Have a good night.